I would like to call to order the March 18, 2025, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Jean Marseille Jr.
Present.
Patrick Mayfield.
Present.
Steven Myans.
Present.
Peter Pivko.
Present.
Sam Fish.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Will Corrente, Debra Raine, and
Debra Raine just arrived.
Debra is present, and Daniel Kusakjian are not present.
Next order of business is approval of the February 19, 2025 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any changes or corrections? In hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is report of the planning staff.
Good evening, Chair, Board Members. Angela Van, Planning and Zoning Administrator, give you a quick update of the last cases that's been heard since your last planning board meeting. First case was a text amendment, city-initiated text amendment to do the following, to amend the required documentation for proof of ownership, to amend section 94, 611, definitions to clarify building and wall height and measurement, and to amend the definition for dwelling unit to allow one additional kitchen per unit. You heard this at your December 17 meeting, you approved it six to one, and commissioners had final approval at their March 3 meeting, five to zero. Next was the Broadway Mixed Use District. This was a total rewrite of the Broadway Mixed Use Regulations. We replaced the new Broadway with a, we replaced the old one, which is B MUD 1 and B MUD 2, with a new Broadway Mixed Use District, amended the regulations, we added, incorporated new regulations regarding height, standards setback, standards buffer requirements, permitted uses, hoping to spur redevelopment along the Broadway corridor. And one thing you did not see, changes since the planning board meeting, we also was approached by our group, so we amended to allow single-family uses within B MUD district. Right now, everything is either commercial and/or multifamily. I mean, these are townhomes, but they could be divided up into actually single-family. We thought this was a great use to border a new development that you've probably been hearing about in the newspapers and all, between 44th and 40th Street. So we just amended the code to basically allow those, not allow single-family uses within the B MUD district with 75 feet from Broadway, and also amended to allow some type of townhouse use up to 45 feet. That concludes staff presentation. Happy to ask any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff? And if not, I'd like to welcome our new board member. Hello. I just learned you joined us, so please tell us who you are.
Hi, Daniel Kusakian. Thank you for having me.
Well, thank you. We'll get, next meeting, I promised you a proper introduction. All right.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none. That then leads us into ex parte communications, and let me begin by saying, with respect to case number 2501, I received an email from the applicant, which I forwarded to the clerk and asked be made a part of the record. In case number 2002, I had a Zoom meeting with the applicant and received from the clerk a compilation of emails and letters in support and in opposition to the project. I'll be basing my decisions on these cases based solely upon the evidence presented this evening. As to all other matters before us, I have had no ex parte communications, I've received no written communications, I have conducted no investigation, I made no site visits, and I have received no expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record. Does anyone else have anything to disclose? Let me start with you, Sam, first.
Regarding planning case 2501, I did have a call with the applicant regarding the project. Regarding planning board case 2002, I did attend a Zoom meeting with a representative for the owner. Everything that we were here tonight is, I will make my decision based on everything that we hear today only. Other than the two items listed, I've had no ex parte communications, I've received no written communications, I've received no, or have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communication be made part of the record.
Thank you so much, Debra.
Okay. First, let me say that I did have a Zoom meeting regarding planning board case number 2501, and I did receive an email regarding the Flagler Towers. As it relates to the items on the agenda this evening, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record, and my decisions will be based on the information presented this evening.
Thank you so much, Peter.
With regards to planning board case 2501, I also received an email. And regarding planning board case 1991, I participated in a Zoom information review. My decisions will be based on the information presented today. Regarding the other items on the agenda, I have not had any ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted investigations, nor have I made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. Patrick.
With respect to case 2501, I did receive an email from the applicant. In addition, I took part in a Zoom meeting with the applicant for case number 2002. Of course, my decisions this evening will be based on the testimony presented here. With respect to all other agenda items, I have not had any ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. Jean.
Other than emails received from the clerk, I have had no ex parte communications, I have received no written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you, Daniel.
In regards to case number 2501, I did receive an email from the applicant. On all other matters, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
All right. Thank you so much. That then brings us into the swearing-in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to offer testimony this evening, please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
You may be seated. Next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. That then brings us to planning board case number 2501. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, planning board members. My name is Eddie Schrader. I am the COO for the developer, Neil Kozakoff. Many of you, I think, know Neil. He's been developing in Northwood for the last 30 years. We've co-developed a project with Sam Fish in West Palm Beach several years ago, which is very successful. So, you know, we know Northwood, we understand the nuances of Northwood. In 2017, we completed a 100-unit apartment project in Northwood called 312 Northwood, very successful. In 2024, we completed a 100-unit apartment project in Northwood called Park West. And our proposed project is the, it's the evolution of development and growth in the Northwood neighborhood. It's an 80-unit condo building, very classic design. We feel that it fits into the neighborhood very well. It fits into Seamud, and we very much appreciate your support of the project. So, thank you.
Right, thank you. Any questions? Oh, want to speak?
Full presentation, if you like.
Oh, no, that's fine. I didn't mean to catch you. I thought he was the whole presentation, that's why I was asking. Go ahead.
Thank you.
I thought it was pretty short. I was going to commend him.
Sorry. Sorry, I'll make it quick. John Schmidt, agent for the applicant. The site's located on Broward Avenue, just north of Butler, and just north of the forthcoming O'Laura project. That's the two lots highlighted in blue there. They're currently just residential buildings. We're proposing 80-unit multifamily condominium, 18 stories, 202 feet. It's 102 parking places on floors 1 through 5, and then we've got a 6-floor amenity deck, and then residential towers on 7 through 18. We're utilizing the Curry Mixed Use Height incentive to get the additional 91 feet, so our base is 111, and we're seeking the total of 102. We're also seeking a variance relief from the active use liner that you've seen a few times here with other projects. Again, the incentives here, base height of 111, the additional height, we'll be seeking portionally through the gold equivalent lead, the National Green Building Association, and then a contribution of over 1.5 million to the improvements at Curry Park. The variance request, again, is for the active use liner for the first 20 feet for our floors 2 through 5. So the first floor does have the active use, but 2 through 5, we're asking for relief. And it's really because of how shallow the lot is and getting an efficient parking garage to work. So you can see here, it's just a loop for the parking garage. If we had to meet the active use and remove that 20, first 20 feet, or remove eight parking places from here for four floors, it'd be losing about 32 units, I believe, and, or, I'm sorry, it would eliminate seven units or one floor if we had to comply with that. It's been granted on several projects within the Seamud, which includes O'Laura, the Ritz-Carlton, and the 2175 Curry Park redevelopment. Those properties are much larger blocks, and we're able, would be more able to accomplish it, but ours is really constrained. We did work with staff to make sure that we did a nice architectural treatment to those four floors, using the opaque milk glass. You can see, you know, what they look like in the real world on the, on the middle two slides, and then in the elevation, what you'd see from the roadway or the streetway or the pedestrian zone. We meet all the standards for the major PD development, A through D. We also meet all the variance standards, A through J. We, in summary, are asking for the 80 condominiums. They're for sale product, they're not apartments, which is really kind of nice for stability up in the area. We're going to go the 18 stories and 202 feet, utilizing the height standards, asking for the variance. We have full staff report and recommendation for approval. Our team is here, if you have any technical questions, and we'd like your support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? You do, Jean, go ahead.
Can you go back to slide number nine with the active use liner?
Yes.
The area highlighted in red, is that not the ground floor?
No, it, it's up, so the ground floor does have active use. Our offices and things are there, so it does not, oh, the picture on the left is a ground floor of another building, just showing the milk glass.
Got it.
The milk glass effect, and then the one above that's just where you might see it, you know, more mass of it. And then the, to the right picture is actually the four floors that we're asking for, which is 2 through 5.
Okay. And that's the only rendering you have?
That's correct, yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. When I look at the building elevation, it seems like it's a typical floor, just extruded up. Is there any thought about creating some form of animation with the balconies so that it doesn't appear to be such a monotonous, the expression of the building?
Yeah, they did look at that, and can you address that?
Yeah, Javier, you want to? Good evening, thank you. Javier Funtin Partners, 4533 Poncetlán Boulevard. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I do have all your elevations and stuff.
Okay. Yeah, we did look at various different options. We looked at some wavy options, we looked at, you know, some that were sort of in and out, and actually, the building is actually pretty small in width, right? It's only 15,000 square foot lot, and when we landed on the final design, it was because we just thought that it was simpler, cleaner, and just a very simple mid-block kind of building. So we really don't have like a corner to address or something of that nature, so we did want to go with just nicer railings and the milk glass, but just go very simple on the design itself. So yes, there was a lot of thought put into it, and that's where the group and the ownership landed.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of the applicant?
I have one question. Do you have a plan of the ground floor?
The ground floor? Yes.
So, the active use liner that's on the ground level, can you identify on the plan, sorry, where that occurs, and what the proposed uses in that space are?
It's basically the front of the lobby, so the, if we start at the bottom of that drawing, if you will, the, the corner piece there exactly, that's our fire command room, and then you've got the main lobby, which is the sort of brownish area. We've got some steps up to the building, because we are much higher than the street with the new flood elevations. And then on the left side, or on the middle, exactly where he's at, is our, access from handicap, because we've got steps in the front, so that will be our little handicap access. And then the rest of it is actually the entrance to our parking garage.
I see, so all the uses on the ground floor are limited to the, the project itself for the, for the building? There's no, like, tenant spaces for other?
No, we don't have any retail space or anything like that. It's basically just our front lobby, if you will.
Single use.
Yes. It's our main lobby entrance, yeah. And we, we wanted to make the full width lobby, just to get as much bang for our buck as we could.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions of the applicant? And if not, would anyone from the public wish to be heard? I don't know if we have any cards for this one?
Staff.
Staff report.
Staff.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes. All right, thank you. Forgive me. I needed to hear from staff. We need to hear from staff before we hear from the public. Sorry about that. I'm anxious to move this along tonight, you can tell.
Sounds like you're ready to go home. No presentation for the applicant, no presentation for staff.
You're right. You're learning.
Alexis Sanglier, planner for the record. So I'm just going to jump into slide five. So as you know, currently in Curry Mixed Use, you would see 1, 2, and then the newest building to the north is four stories, and the base height being of this mixed use district, 101. So that was because in November 2021, an ordinance was passed that increased the height incentives to provide more flexibility in having more pedestrian-oriented, and to see more residential buildings in this. This is why you're seeing a building with this mass, and this is just the context on the bottom of just the other developments you're seeing, just so there is future in this area for more growth and more development. And then I'm just going to talk about the variance request. The applicant did a pretty good job talking about it. Staff does agree that due to the size of the lot and fitting everything, something would have had to give necessarily. The applicant did work with staff to get a design that looked and appealed to the street so it wouldn't necessarily look like parking. And then also, you can't see this, but there is going to be a slight wall, so the headlights won't be visible, so no one's going to be blinded from the streets of someone parking their car. And then that's just the picture right there. The project did go to PPRC, they did the traffic study, and then the school. Staff is recommending approval of the variance, and approval with conditions regarding the site plan. And then I just wanted, this is the standard of the variance, I just wanted to clarify on John's slide, this is for a Level 3 special review, not a major PD amendment. So these are the standards for that. And then these are just the conditions of approval. The applicant is aware of the conditions of approval. And then this is just the public notice that went out. Any questions for staff?
Any questions of staff? Let me start on this end, with you. Any questions? Jean?
Just going back to the active use liner, what's in place of the active use liner on floors 2 through 5? What do we see there on slide number, I believe it was, 6?
There is mechanical equipment, and then bike storage, that wouldn't be counted as active use. So for active use, we would count like a lobby, a gym, like a
But we're looking at a glass facade, is that, is that what that is?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And then I just, a small, another point that you guys would have the final vote on this application.
Right. Thank you.
Patrick, any questions?
Peter?
No. Debra? Sam? I'm hearing none, or hearing one?
It's coming, he needs a run roll.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Now I have a card for someone that wishes to be heard. Is anyone else besides Robert Morris who wishes to be heard on this application? Mr. Morris, if you could come forward?
No.
No? No, okay.
Chicken.
All right. All right. If no one else from the public wishes to be heard, we'll bring it back to the board. Any concerns about this application? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
I move that the planning board grant the variances associated with formal site plan review case number 25-01, a request by Matt Wojcicki of Smith Nichols on behalf of AWDC LLC, from sections 94-209 of City of Zoning and Land Development Regulations, as listed in the staff report dated March 3, 2025. This motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted, and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with each of the applicable criteria of Article 2, Sections 94-38, D6 of the City of West Palm Beach's Zoning and Land Development Regulations.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Did you mention the conditions?
Or did you mention the conditions?
I think there are. What conditions were? In addition, the granting of the variances is made subject to the following restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning land development regulations inconsistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
And you second with the amendment. Thank you so much. We have an amended motion and an accepted second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That then brings us to planning board case number 2502.
Is there a second one, Mr. Chair, for Level 3?
I'm just sorry, does a second motion sound? The site plan review?
Okay, all right. We need one more motion, okay?
Thanks, Sam.
I'll make the run. I move that the planning board grant formal site plan review case number 25-01, a request by Matt Wojcicki of Smith Nichols on behalf of AWDC LLC for a Level 3 special review to permit the construction of a multiple-family condominium project comprised of 80 residential units within the Curry Mixed Use District. This motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted, and the staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes finding of fact that the application complies with each of the applicable special review standards found in Sections 94-55B2 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations.
The conditions? You want to do the conditions? The conditions? Any conditions on this? Sam, any conditions as well?
One more?
Yeah, one's more.
In addition, chapter 28, the granting of this Level 3 special review is subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated March 3, 2025. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning land development regulations, in consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. We will then move on to case number 2502.
I approve.
And may we hear from the applicant?
My name is Alfonso Hernandez, and I'm an architect here in West Palm Beach. It's an AH Architect, located at 218 de Tura Street, Suite 200. Thank you for allowing us to review this project with you all. This is very exciting for not only our company, but I think for the West, for West Palm Beach. We wanted to just share it with you. We have a few slides, but feel free to obviously ask me questions as, as we go through it. So as mentioned, this project, it's very exciting. This is called 45th Street Complex, and the reason that it's interesting for us is because there's, it's involved with other developments that are happening here in the city. So I'm just going to take you through the slides, and we'll be able to go through it. As I mentioned, I'm here, in this case, for the county. The county is, is the client, and they're the landowners of the project, and community service is the actual end user that is going to be using the building. They currently are located here in West Palm Beach, and we are planning to relocate them to the 45th Street Complex. Want to tell a little bit of the story of the background of the existing facility, or rather, the existing area on 45th Street. So it's a large parcel, it's a 41-acre site, and it dates back all the way to the 1900s. It used to be the county home, and has had different developments throughout times, but it's always been owned by the county, and in this case, we are, again, are continuing to plan to use for county government use. So it's, it's been around for a long time, you've probably seen it, and we believe that this particular use is going to be really helpful for us. And the way that it came about, it came through the one penny sale surtax back in 2016, and at that time, the building that's currently located at 810 de Tura was the one that was identified for potential improvement. So based on that surtax, the penny sale surtax is how the funding was created to be able to move forward with this particular project. And then moving forward in time, in 2022, as you probably remember, there was, you know, the intentions to be able to use the site for the University of Florida, that was going to be a part of that particular plan that had happened in 2022. And at that time, again, the county, both the city, had agreed to be able to move forward with making that available for them. Since then- Since then, obviously, they have that university that was ending up through, but the good deal is Vanderbilt University is coming to town. And so with that in mind, it has been approved by the county to be able to move forward. And part of the process is to take the existing facility, the existing building that's there, to be able to relocate it, or rather give it a new home and be able to demolish the one that's there in order to be able to create the space in order to accelerate the Vanderbilt University. And so as I mentioned, this is the context, this is the site where it's located. So it's right there on De Tura, 810. And the building has been around for a while and I'll tell you a little more details on the current building. So the building is located about three and a half acres. It's located, again, as I mentioned, in De Tura Street, developed back in 1955. So the building's been around in the community for a long time. It has about 28,000 square feet. And the building right now, again, supports a community service staff, which is about 209 employees. And about half of the employees are located in that building, they are located in other buildings. So this is going to make a lot of sense for us because now we're going to be able to take this, again, bring all the different parts and pieces of, let's say, the community service into one location. And so the idea though is that in the future, this is going to be part of a future, let's say, growth and development for the county. And part of the master planning that we have includes a 350,000 square foot, let's say, future growth for it. So at this point, the programming includes, again, the community service will stay where it's at. There are a few certain things that are happening along the site that it's not necessarily part of our particular scope or what we're presenting to you, but just as a, in context. Australian Avenue, there is a drainage plan that's being, let's say, it's moving forward right now and it's part of the drainage system that is also going to include a retention area on our particular parcel. So that's just something that's happening in that particular location. As I mentioned, part of it is being able to give community service a new home. And they are going to be a part of this new facility, which is a 60,000 square foot office building that I'll share with you in a minute. And then part of the site itself for 45th Street is going to include, again, a long range plan, not for, let's say, we're not submitting plans at this point, we're just submitting the idea and also entitling the land for the 350,000 square foot use. So that's part of the future use. And then here it gives you a little bit more detail of what's happening on the site. So as you can tell, we have Australian, let's say, to the left-hand side, to the top is 45th Street, and this is the entire parcel. And so there are various things that are currently in there. Currently, right now, there is the High Ridge Family Center that is a county-owned building located on the bottom circle. The middle circle is called the Victim Center Building and it's an 8,300 square foot facility. Also, there's a portion of the school district that does lease within the property. And there's also a warehouse component also for the school board that's located in that top north. So those are the current, let's say, current users of the site. And then with regards to other, let's say, constraints on the site, we have other things that we are, again, as I mentioned, keeping in mind. Part of it is some of the existing facilities that are there. We mentioned the warehouse. There are going to be other things that are happening along Australian. In the future, there will be perhaps a, there is an intersection located on 43rd. And right now, we're not planning to make any adjustments or attachments to that. There's also the, another intersection that's going to happen on 42nd. That one is part of the project and we are planning to make some improvements to be able to have proper access to the site. But these are some of the constraints that you can see. And then part of it to the right-hand side is this other important canal expansion project, which is part of this whole drainage system, not necessarily part of our petition before you today, but just as a point of context, that's what's happening in that location. There's also a historic cemetery that's located in the middle of the site. And in this case, our project is planning to, basically, we're not touching anything there, but we are defining the edge and making reference to that. And as I mentioned, the other programs include the school district and the High Ridge Family Center. So here now, basically, we're going to share with you two phases of the project. So the phase two, I'll start off with that because we'll just, it's easier as far as the numbering system. Between one through four is part of the future. It's not part of the current, let's say, petition that we have except for the entitlement of the area. This is going to be a future development that will happen maybe 15 years from now. We're really not sure when that development will happen, but we're doing this master plan to accommodate the future growth and to really think about the potential development for the site. But what we're really focusing on is going to be our building, which is number five. So that's a 60,000 square foot, two-story building that I mentioned there's going to be coming in from the 43rd and we're going to plan to have a new driveway coming into the site. So number five, number eight are part of the development. Number nine is also part of a water retention area and number 10 is a lake that we're going to be able to use for our drainage for the site. Number 11, as I mentioned before, is part of another project on the site, but that's a canal expansion, water retention, not necessarily part of our site. Number seven is basically part of the edge condition for the cemetery and that will stay as is. So one, two, three, and four, again, that's for future, but it includes a lake, a potential parking, future development and a lake and a parking structure as well. So as mentioned, our building, in order for us to really come up with a design, we had to look at the existing constraints on the building. We obviously would like for the site to be fully operational, there's other buildings out there and that's part of our, our plan is to make sure that the operations are working properly within that location. We want to make sure that, again, the building had good access and so it's placed in a very good location. Again, the access, we're introducing a new entrance to the street. And so we believe that there's a lot of benefits for this, including the property value for this area should also benefit. So as mentioned, this is the actual floor plan that shows the existing, rather, let's say, the site plan that focuses in on our particular building. Entrance from the, again, the access in the bottom on 42nd, Australian, the building is right there in the center. And then the green areas, the dark green areas are part of the development. The lighter areas are part of the existing conditions. So what we're, again, trying to accomplish is, in this case, to be exact, it's 59,283 square foot building, two stories. And then part of the parapet will go from 40 feet to about 31 feet. Parking, 169 is what's required, but we're providing 192, making sure that we accommodate the needs of the particular end user. We've also added a little bit more landscaping than what the, than what the city requires. This is a county standard to have a little bit more landscaping. We thought it'll be beneficial and helpful for all the neighbors around. The site itself is approximately nine acres. And then the building is being planned to be called the Maude Ford Lee Building, former commissioner here in Palm Beach County. So again, those include some of the details for you that just relate to our particular building. And so here's a more of a, let's say, an aerial view of the building. As you can see, the access is coming from 42nd. And then there is going to be a plaza, let's say, for the community, in this case, for community service to be able to particularly use. And then there's a central access and a parking along the perimeter. This is a, another aerial view of the building, just kind of laying in the site. As you can see, there's a lot of landscaping and that's one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we did is, let's say, locate a building in a nice green field with a lot of accessibility. And as I mentioned, the building itself is going to be called the Maude Ford Lee Building. And then there's a lot of different things that we're doing in the project that relate to some of the existing conditions out here. Part of it is, you know, connecting to nature, we thought it would be very appropriate. The site is actually quite beautiful. It's got, you know, a lot of trees and a rolling area. So we thought it would be great to be able to create, let's say, this concept that connects to some of the natural elements. And here you can kind of see that idea, that's in the front plaza overlooking the entrance to the main building, which is located on the south side. This is located a little bit on the east side and you can kind of see what's happening along the sides there. There's also a shading element that we have along the perimeter with some accent colors. And so the shading element really helps, we want it to be a sustainable building. It helps reducing some of the heat loads and create some interesting, again, dynamics along the perimeter. Again, and some of the colors really represent some of the dynamic ideas and diversity is the way that we look at it. And so here is an elevation of both the north, excuse me, the east and the west side. As I mentioned, that's another three-dimensional view. The top area also includes some of the mechanical enclosures. So basically, what we're trying to, again, what we're trying to accommodate is, you know, being able to provide the 350,000 square foot future use, which will be a four-story. It'll include a five-level parking. But again, that's part of a future development and that development will be part roughly within a 10-acre site. In this case, we are going to have access, again, on 45th Street with the health department, but that's all for the future. And we're also going to do, and some internal connections within the complex, so it'll go really smoothly. So again, that's just for the future, for the future use of the building. Again, we've studied what we have at this point and we believe that the building is very compatible with the current zoning. So there really isn't anything that we are requesting, no variances. At this point, we feel that we meet all the requirements. Again, with regards to our schedule, I'm sure this may be something of interest. So right now, we're going in through the design. Obviously, hopefully, with your approvals today, we'll continue moving forward. And so once we do that, we should be in permitting, we hope, March, April at the latest, but hopefully March, is when we're planning to move forward. Currently, the project is being reviewed. We do have a construction manager on board. Dwight Stevens Construction is providing some of the pricing, so we're going through that process at this point. And eventually, we're going to be, again, hopefully starting construction between August, September is our proposed schedule. And then the completion date is going to be 2027, between, you know, sometime between spring and summer. Okay?
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Sam, let me start with you.
So the site plan review is not for just the first phases, it's for the entire, all the phases, correct?
Right, we're looking at the entire, the entire project. But today's phase one, but what we provided was showing the continuation into the, into the future development. But phase one is what we're doing. Sorry.
Phase one is just the single building?
That's correct.
The replacement for the De Tura building?
Yep, phase one, we showed you the master plan so you can see the future growth and development. But phase one is the one that's outlined in kind of that orange color, which includes five, five, eight, nine, and 10. That's all part of our current development, but this shows you the big picture for the full development.
Got you. Okay, I don't have any other questions at the moment.
Okay, Deborah, any questions?
No, I don't. He just answered which buildings were in phase one, yeah.
Okay, Peter?
Considering the beautiful amount of flat roof area, do you know if the county is considering using solar panels on top of the building?
So at this point, we're developing a sustainable building and so that may be part of the future growth as needed. We are, for example, going to be providing, you know, conduits so that, you know, in the future, when they're, you know, have electric cars, then we have it all set up. So we're going to have conduits located on the roof for that future need. But that's a great point. So it's just currently, it's not part of this set, but it's part of the future development as needed.
Thank you. Patrick? You may have mentioned it. Is this going to be a LEED certified project or?
So right now, it's going to be sustainable, but we're not looking for achieving a LEED certification. But we're going to have commissioning agents and others helping us. We're just not going through the LEED certification process.
Jean? Tanya, any questions? Okay. Thank you so much. Not yet, ma'am. Do you have a card you want to give? Give it to the clerk. Okay. Thank you so much. May we hear from staff? Not forgotten.
Alex Singleer, put in for the record. I just brought up the request of this application, what we're voting on is for a rezone. Currently, the property is zoned community service and they are proposing to rezone it to community service plan development. And this is because since, this is one of staff's recommendations in initial pre-application meetings, since they are proposing a master site plan and doing the project in two phases, it made a more of a logical sense to convert it to a community service plan development that allows them more flexibility with design. And then the other part of the request that you're voting on is for the site plan review on phase one. Phase two will come in in a later date, but right now, we're just solely voting on phase one of the site plan.
Alright, anything else you wanted to add?
And then this is just the, I'll go fast. These are just the standards of the rezoning for the site stand standards. And then the conditions of approval for the site plan. Staff is working with the applicant. We are going to modify one of the mobility comments regarding phase two of the project just to add slightly better language before it goes to city commission. But any comments for me regarding this application?
Tanya, let me start with you. Any questions of staff? Jean?
No, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying the request.
You're welcome.
Patrick? Peter? Deborah? Sam, any questions of staff?
No questions.
Okay, thanks so much. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? Please come forward.
Good evening, I'm Virginia Smith. And I received the notice that the project was happening and it seemed to back up to...
I'm so sorry. Were you here during the initial swearing in of the speakers? Probably not. Is anyone who's come in since I've sworn in the speakers, if you could all stand and raise your right hand, ma'am, if you do so as well, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to be giving in this proceeding will be truthful?
True, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. And ma'am, if I could trouble you to move your microphone down a little bit so we can hear you better. Thank you.
I'm Virginia Smith. And the drawing that I see seems to back up to Australian Court. And I live on Australian Court. And I would like to know what's going to happen to the buildings that are already in this area. And if the drawing that we saw at the very beginning, the building that they are going to put up with 42nd Street, is that going to go further toward 45th Street or is it going to come south? And that is not clear to us. And those of us who live on Australian Court would like to know what's in our backyard.
Okay, anything else you'd like to ask or add?
Pardon me?
Anything else you'd like to add to what you said?
No, that's it. But I'd like a more complete drawing of what's going to happen since we live there and that would be our backyards.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's someone else here, Cynthia Misick. She says, "I doesn't want to speak," but says, "I have a concern about additional traffic." Does any, did you want to come forward?
No, not really. I just wanted to know how to...
If you understand anything, ma'am, you have to come forward, state your name and put on the record. We can't hear comments from the gallery, I'm so sorry. Alright. Are there any, does anyone else from the public wish to be heard? And if not, I'm going to invite, then come forward, sir, and be sure to complete a card, but you can, ma'am, sorry. If you could come forward, you could give your testimony and then you could complete the card afterwards. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard on this application? Please come forward. State your name for the record.
My name is Catherine McClary.
And ma'am, please speak directly in the microphone. Come forward, please. Come forward, please.
A little bit closer.
Yeah, the microphone, you see it there?
Yes, I see it right here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. My name is Catherine McClary, and I also live on Australian Court, and my concern was the traffic, and I was unaware that we have a cemetery back there. And I also was concerned about the three, I think, three levers, three floors or whatever of the building, and I wanted to know how were you going to approach, are you going to be coming into that building off of Australia, or are you going to come in off of 45th Street?
Okay. Anything else? Questions you had?
No.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, all right.
Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? And if not, I'm going to ask the applicant to come forward again, and maybe you could address these specific concerns you heard to give these ladies answers.
Thank you. Those are good questions. I think our project's a little further north, and we were making sure that we had the right information. So, our project is, is located, or the entrance is going to be on 42nd. I don't know if we can maybe back up to see one of the plans? We'll... Thank you. Okay, thank you. So, as, as part of the first slide... Which one? Thank you. So, currently, the entrance is, of, of the entire property is located right on Australian, and you could probably see it, which is kind of the gray area right in between. We are planning to have the entrance located on 47, on 42nd, and that's going to be part of a signalization.
There we go, thank you. I didn't see where you were pointing before.
Okay, perfect.
So, that's the current entrance, the one you're pointing to now.
Yeah. And if we have the ability to zoom here, maybe I can share a little bit more. So, the 42nd is going to be the new entrance located here. It's going to be a signalized entrance, so it's going to be pretty safe. It's going to be better than the one that currently is there. So, all the existing buildings are going to stay, but the, the county is planning to put a new intersection, or rather, in this case, a signalization, so it's going to be a pretty safe access to the site. And let me see if I can take you to the next, a few more slides forward. Sorry, I need your help. Can you maybe connect me to the, back to the plan? Yep. I'd like to go to our site plan right over here.
This one?
Perfect. Excellent, thank you.
10, okay.
Number 11? I'll just scroll down. Thank you. So, as you can see, this is going to be part of the new entrance. The existing buildings are all going to access at this location. This would be a signalized area, so that means that it'll be a lot safer than what currently it is. Currently, the entrance is located a little bit further north, and that's where our building is going to be located. It's going to be a safer entrance overall. We've also been able to address the, the traffic, the traffic count, and at this point, we've determined that it's pretty safe. We also shared that with the city. And so, this is not a huge development. Again, it's about 192 cars maximum is what we're going to be able to, to provide in, in the entire phase one. So, again, it's, it's a small use, but the, the entrance will be located here on 42nd, as I mentioned, and it should be a lot safer than the one that currently we have. This one shows a little bit better, and it's going to be a, again, signal, signalized entrance located to the driveway. So, it's going to be, again, a lot better than what is currently is there, and that's going to allow to have two lanes to be able to come into the property, and obviously, two lanes out. One that can go on north, and then one can make a left with a signalized, again, entrance. So, hopefully, that helps to maybe clarify that thought.
Okay, thank you.
Is the building north, what is second here for the fifth street?
Yeah, yeah, I think, ma'am, we, they could talk to you privately on that and get your questions answered. All right. At this point, then, we're going to close the public proceedings and bring them back to the board for discussion. All right. Does anyone have any questions or concerns with regard to this application? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval with the conditions.
I think it's a great project, especially like the architectural treatment, the Breeze Soleil, it's well-designed and be a great home for this organization.
I thought you were going to make the motion then, but I guess not.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I move that the Planning Board recommend the City Commission approval of Planning Board Case Number 1991, a request by Alfonso Hernando Architect on behalf of PB County and its Facilities Development Operations Department, FDNO, to change the zoning designation of the property is located at 4200 North Australian Avenue from Community Service to Community Service Plan Development, CSPD, to allow for the construction of an approximately 57,000 square feet Palm Beach County office building. Motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes finding of fact that the application complies with the required standards in Section 92-32A, 94-35C, and 94-207D of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations. In addition, this recommendation is made subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated March 5th, 2025. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations in consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
The conditions? Just, I'm sorry, were there conditions that need to be mentioned or not? Do you want to be sure? You covered that? Okay, we have motion and second. Great. Any further discussion? If not, all those of favor signified by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, thank you. That then brings us to Planning Board Case Number, oop, there's a second motion. Okay, second motion. Patrick?
I don't see it.
They're saying we don't see it.
Where? I don't see the language.
Samuel, can you help us out?
Conditions are imposed?
Mm-hmm.
It's the next paragraph.
So, it wasn't our fault.
It's the next, next paragraph.
Hey.
It's the next, it's the next paragraph. Just scroll down.
Oh, maybe.
Unmodified.
Patrick, he's the one who's going to make the motion.
That's the one we read.
For the site plan and then...
No, he didn't.
Did he? As well.
I just read this.
Was that the rezoning?
Yes. So, I read this and that.
Okay. Here's one other for site plan.
Messing with Patrick, mistake.
I don't think so.
I don't see it.
Someone's confused the key, maybe, maybe, um...
Why are they locking this out? We're here three hours.
One motion with condition for...
I think we did the right thing.
This is the one motion with condition.
Yeah. I think they're saying that, I think they're saying there's something else in addition.
Yeah, there were two.
I know.
There was the zoning, and then there was the site plan, but the site plan's not in there. Well, I don't feel bad.
If you can break it, there's, Gene, we'll be impressed.
They used to keep it up.
Oh, I was so, I was about to be very impressed.
I wondered if, maybe it's the court.
It's locked.
I know, he's trying to break, he's trying to get that thing to open.
You need a special ID card.
No, he's trying to...
Jimmy, Jimmy it.
Yeah. I think Gene's motivated. When he takes his saw out, we know we're in trouble.
I'm not, I'm not going to wait in motion.
He's trying to break in the rest. When he gets his saw, we know we're in trouble. I won't answer about your experience, because that's not my first reaction. Oh, I'll pick the lock.
I'm going to call the cops on that.
Okay, so we're going, what should we do? We should, we did this, we'll come back.
We did that one.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, we're going to wait on that and proceed with our next case and cover the last motion at the end of our meeting. So, at this point, we are going to move forward with Planning Board Case Number 2002, and I was rooting for you, Gene, if it matters. I was pulling for you.
I wonder if someone else has... We, we need to address this. Seriously, it's ridiculous.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Board. For the record, Harvey Sawyer of Shutt and Bowen. On behalf of the applicant, I'm delighted to be here tonight. We are joined by both the developer ownership team, as well as our professional team. I will present most of the project to you. We do have architecture, landscape architecture, if you would like to get into those details, but I'm not going to spend time on that unless you or your colleagues request it. So, this is a joint venture of two developers, one of which is Colter, well-known in our community, developer of the Alexander, One City Plaza, Two City Plaza, Hyatt Place Hotel, a noted developer throughout Florida, and their partner, Perco Development, which does smaller boutique, super luxury condominiums. These are two of them on Jupiter Island. The request before you this evening is a lateral rezoning from MF32 to an RPD. Part of the project includes about 1,000 square feet of a commercial pet grooming use. We are including in this the deeded property owned by the applicant that sits under Flagler Drive. As you know, Flagler Drive is an easement across much of the area that it covers. Our total site area is about 1.4 acres. We are also seeking a formal Level 2 Site Plan Review and approval from you, as well as seven waivers that I will go through individually. The proposed project is located at 3705 South Flagler Drive. I'll give you a site map in a moment, but it's a few buildings north of Southern Boulevard, running between Flagler Drive and Washington. I have either covered that or will cover it, so why don't we skip ahead to the site location? The site is identified in red. It is about five properties north of Southern Boulevard and about five properties south of Monroe Street, which are the two cross streets that run through to Flagler. It is currently occupied by a 60-plus-year-old, three-story condominium, originally built in 1962 as an apartment. A few decades later, it was converted to a condominium. This is the current condition today, typical 1960s apartment building. Again, it was constructed in '62. There are 39 multifamily units there. We are proposing 39 multifamily units. Under the MF32 zoning, we're entitled to 32.27 density units by right, which would equal 46. We are not seeking the other seven units. So, it is 39 today. It is proposed to be 39 tomorrow. We did not want to increase intensity, traffic, or density in the neighborhood. So, it's, flu designation is multifamily, as everything in the neighborhood is. So, this is not a case of an upzoning. We are already zoned at multifamily, 32 units to the acre. This is a lateral rezoning to utilize an RPD. The current zoning, as I stated, is MF32, and we are seeking to make that an RPD. This is the project summary. It's in your backup material. I won't read it to you. Again, maximum density is 32.27 units per acre, and we are proposing five units less per acre at 27.3 units per acre. You'll notice on the building coverage, an open space. It's about a 50/50 split with 51% of the property being building coverage, 49% being open space. I think I've already stated the top half of this graphic to you. As a point of reference, on the bottom half of the graphic, this shows the density comparison with other projects on South Flagler Drive that are luxury high-rise residential that your board and the City Commission have approved in the last decade, and you will see that our 27 units per acre is right in the middle of, of the pack here. So, let's start walking through the site plan. This is the ground floor site plan, and on, well, in the center is the tower element. The remainder of the white is the podium. The podium is about 25 feet high. There is one level of subterranean parking, one level of above-grade parking, and then a level that is the lobby and amenity package. So, that's three of the floors with 15 floors of residential above it. On the right side, you will see where we have ingress and egress points. I will show those in greater detail later. You see where the proposed pet grooming facility is. You see the Washington Road frontage again with an ingress and egress point, and identifying where the FPL vault and pump room are. So, let's talk about the access points to the property. In the blue arrows, you will see what is the residential and guest ingress point, which is on South Flagler Drive. The egress point for the residents and the guests is also on Flagler Drive, but they are separated. This is to distribute traffic. The non-residential use, which would mean Amazon deliveries, UPS, FedEx, moving vans, garbage, recycling, all of the other traffic is completely brought in board off of Washington so that there are no vehicles with their hazard lights on blocking through lane on Washington. So, all of that is internalized, hidden behind a very wide generous landscape buffer, so none of the residents to the west view back-of-house operations. So, for example, a garbage or recycling truck would completely pull internally into the property, perform whatever their business is, and pull back out. It is not a case, which we have many of in the city, where they pull in and then they have to back out, which creates a dangerous condition for all concerned. So, all of that is internalized. Now, if you're a resident pulling in from Flagler Drive, you then turn in where the yellow arrow is at the top of your screen to go underneath to the subterranean or second floor of the parking garage. Similarly, the exit from the residential parking garage is where the other yellow arrow is, and then back out. Now, if you are a guest, you continue up this ramping system up to the lobby level, which is here, and there is a valet to take your vehicle and put it in the garage. So, that is the arrival experience for a guest. The purple arrows are the pedestrian access points across the property, which we're going to talk about more in a moment. This is just a diagram of the sub-grade level of parking, which is our Level 1. All of that is below grade. Our Level 2 is the podium and access point, and our Level 3, as I said, is this arrival experience at the lobby and the valet. We've placed the tower in here beneath... Beneath that is the lobby, and then the amenity deck on the east side. Let's stop and talk about the building massing. This is probably the, you know, biggest issue for you to discuss tonight, and I imagine why many of the folks are here. It's always an issue, building height. So if we were to build this by right, the red building is the maximum building envelope that we could build using the two feet of building height for every one foot of side setback. That would yield a 100-foot building, call it a 10-story building. But it would be nearly bumper-to-bumper. We have two front setbacks that we have to adhere to because we face two roads. So we have a front setback at 25 feet off of Flagler, and we have a front setback at 25 feet off of Washington. If you were to build to both of those setbacks, using the two feet of building height for every one foot of side setback, this is what you would get. This is not only not an attractive building and a non-marketable building, but it's not a good building for our neighbors because it blocks everyone's views, which is why you have not seen a developer anywhere else on North or South Flagler Drive develop one of these. They all come in with an RPD and side setback waiver request so that they can do something that is more beneficial to all concerned. And we're going to come back to that. I will also tell you that this developer spent a lot of time with a number of iterations of designs. We're proposing something at 194 feet, which is 18 total stories, 15 stories of residential. If you were to compress that down to a lower number, pick your number, it squeezes the building out. This shows it squeezed down to 10 stories, and like a balloon, when you squeeze it, you know, it bubbles out somewhere else. The version of this that creates the least amount of view shed blockage for our neighbors is what we have proposed. Every other iteration that we looked at created more view blockage to our neighbors. The proposal that we have in front of you, that we'll go through in a moment, at the 194 feet of height, achieves several things. It achieves the maximum view preservation, or creation in some cases, creating new view that doesn't presently exist for our neighbors. It allows breathing room on both sides of the building and the roadway. It obviously creates more height for the applicant, which is a good thing because the higher floors sell for more, so it's more valuable to the developer, more tax increment for the city, and more view shed for our neighbors. So I realize that's a little counterintuitive for most people. The knee-jerk reaction is, "Height is bad." I want to walk you through why height, in this case, centered on the property with 100-foot plus setback from Flagler and 100-foot plus setback from Washington is actually beneficial to all concerned. So to give you an idea of a comparison of the by right versus the proposal, these are some view blockage studies from both of our neighbors on the south. This is Portofino South. This is our neighbor to the north. And you can see, we looked at the view blockage of the by right. Now, we did the view blockage, of course, adhering to the setbacks of the proposal, which is the tower. The green is the view shed of the proposed project. Oops. And I think this is the salient slide, which is, if we overlay these on top of each other, what is the additional view creation that you get with the proposal versus the by right? And that would be the additional green area on your screen. And I'll pause and let you absorb this for a moment. So again, the mustard color is the color is the blockage created or the view shed available with the by right, which is the red building. And the proposed project is the blue centered tower. And the differential, the delta between the two, the additional view created, is the green. And that is the maximum amount of green that we could create and still have a viable project with elevator cores, with hallways that meet ADA width, with units that meet ADA width. So it is as compact as we could make that and still make it function architecturally and from an engineering perspective. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the landscaping unless you would like to come back to it, but there are a few important points that I want to share. This being one of them, this shows the landscape buffering around the property. On the north side, we have to host a 10-foot FPL easement plus our 5-foot landscape buffer. You will see 10-foot landscape buffers on both of our road frontages and a 5-foot landscape buffer on the south side of the proposed project. Now, this data table, I think, shares some important information. Again, the site area at 52,000 feet, just more than half of it in building footprint and about 49% of it in open space. The softscape area, we have a requirement of 45%. We're at 49.3% native species requirement, 50%. We've almost doubled that at 91%. The facade coverage, our code requirement is 40%. We're providing 62%. On the right-hand side of your column, we're on our residential, one tree per residential unit, which is the code requirement. We're required 39 of these trees. We're providing 43. On the buffer tree requirements, we're required 73. We're providing 77. So in every one of these metrics, we meet or exceed the code. We also have landscape mitigation requirements. Our mitigation requirement is 7,300 points. The provided is 10,650 points, so we are exceeding that as well. Happy to come back to any of these drawings should you ask to do so. Architecture, I'm going to do something similar. I'm going to hit the highlights, and then we can come back and look at the details. So I will go through each level. The Level 1 Plan, as I stated, is primarily a parking level below grade. It also has some storage units for the owners. Level 2 is above grade, and this is where we have additional parking, our servicing and loading off of this internal access road that enters and exits to Washington Road. It's where our trash room, our bike storage, the pet grooming facility, which is here, as well as a bike storage room. Our Level 3 is that arrival area at the lobby. It's a yoga lawn. It's residential amenities. It's the pool. It's a few additional parking spaces, including EV parking spaces. And then when we get to Level 4, we begin to have our unit mix. We have one two-bedroom unit and two three-bedroom units, ranging from 2,700 square feet to 4,000 feet. So these are not small units. These are large luxury units, sort of single-family home size, but in the sky. Levels 5 through 13 all include nine two-bedroom units and 18 three-bedroom units, spread with the same floor plan that you see here. Again, unit range is the same size. Then we get to our upper floors. We have eight four-bedrooms that range from 5,500 feet to 5,700 square feet, so quite large units. And then we have a penthouse, which is the entire floor, a seven-bedroom, 10,000-square-foot unit.
That's for you, Peter.
Question? Or were you just inviting him to purchase it?
No, I was just... I think he was looking at it by himself, that's all.
It is still for sale, Mr. Pevco. So let's look at some elevations of the property and renderings. So the view from South Flagler Drive, if you are standing on the sidewalk along the seawall, looking due west back at the building across Flagler Drive, this is a plaza that we are going to discuss in a moment. You'll see the top of the podium here with the umbrellas where the pool and amenity deck are located. This is the fitness room and gym. It is all behind glass. It is active use. So there is active use facing the street edge on Flagler. This, on the right-hand side of your screen, is a blow-up of that exact same area. Now, going up with an aerial view of that area, you see the pool deck that's at about 25 feet up in the air on top of the second deck. And it will receive morning sun as well as the southern exposure, which is the best exposure for a pool. If you move the position a little bit and go northeast and look to the southwest, you'll see the ingress point for residents and guests, where the white car is turning in. You can see the very heavy landscape package. You can see how far back this podium is set. You can see off to the left, our neighbor to the south, which is Portofino South. I believe that's 12 stories, 137 feet of habitable, and about 151 total feet. So we're about 50 or 60 feet higher than our neighbor to the south. Though I think if our neighbor to the south rebuilt a 12-story building today, it would be very close to our height because they probably would not surface park it. They'd probably podium park it, and they would probably have higher floor-to-ceiling. So even a 12-story residential building next to a 15-story, they'd probably be within 25 feet of each other, should that ever be reconstructed. Now, let's switch around and look from the Washington side. So on the left side of your screen is our building ghosted in on the site. And what this illustrates is the very large setback on the rear. Washington runs at an angle so that, you know, changes from about an 89-foot setback to almost 150-foot setback here. At the center point, I think it's about 112-foot setback. On the right side of your screen is the rendered version of the Washington roadside, and this illustrates the very generous landscape package. All of our back-of-house operation is completely internalized. It is four-sided architecture, so no one gets a bad view of the building. Everyone is getting a front view of the building, so to speak. The only part visible is at this egress point, and that's where we place the pet grooming, which also has glass and an active use. So no one is looking at a back-of-house. Very thoughtfully designed. Let's go through the waivers. This is a summary table. There are seven of these. The first one, I think, is very easy. As you know, the RPD requirement and the code is quite old. It still requires 10 acres. There's no 10-acre site available in the city that I'm aware of. So every project that I can remember in the last 20 years has needed waiver from this. You all have routinely granted these. City Commission has routinely granted these, so I don't think this one requires a lot of time to spend on it. Here's the one I think you're going to want to spend time on. It's waiver 2. It is the side setbacks. Side setbacks is the same thing as height. For those in the audience that, you know, wonder when we're going to talk about height, this is when we're going to talk about height. It is not called a height waiver. It's called a side setback waiver because, again, under the code, your height is determined by the amount of your side setback. So if you don't meet the side setback to match your height, you must seek a side setback waiver. That is what we are seeking. And I will give you the numerics on that in a moment, but to share with you what we're proposing, it's 109 feet of setback off of Flagler, 120 feet at the midpoint off of Washington Road. This is quadruple the code requirement. As a reminder, it's a 25-foot front setback off each of those roadways. We've more than quadrupled that. Why? Because, as I stated before, and I'm going to demonstrate again, this is actually more beneficial to everyone concerned that we provide the greater setback on the east-west sides than the north-south sides. If we didn't do it here and we did it according to code, you'd get the red building that we had on the earlier graphic. That is not good at all. That 100-foot building, for example, our neighbor to the south, Portofino South, that would block the first 10 floors of unit owners from bumper to bumper. Only the top two floors would have a view anywhere north or northeast. So in deference to them and our neighbor to the north, and to, I think, create just a better project for the developer and the community, it has been put into a tower. So what happens when you actively choose to do that versus meeting the side setbacks? That means you're not meeting the side setbacks. Those are the waivers we are requesting from you, which are a 15-foot setback from our north property line to the podium, a 15-foot setback from our south property line to the podium, and then a 27-foot setback to the tower. And of course, the tower element is the relevant element. The two-story above-grade podium is not the challenge. Now, believe it or not, what we're proposing is very similar or better than what is there today. Of course, what is there today is only a three-story building, not an 18-story building, but the building is presently closer to our neighbors than what we're proposing. So we are pulling that back in some sense. Let's do a, what I think is an instructive comparison to all the other luxury high-rise residential buildings that have been approved by you and the City Commission in the last decade, so that you see where this lines up in its peer group. I think the easiest way to look at it is the percentage reduction in the far right-hand side of the right column. So the Bristol had side setback reductions of 75%, 85%, 93%. South Flagler House, 91%, 86%. I don't need to read these to you, but 75, 85, 93. So they really range from, you know, 70% to the mid-90s. Our proposal is squarely within the middle of that range, or comfortably in the middle of it, at 85%. And I show this to you. Some of you were on the board for all of these approvals. Others of you were not on the board, but that gives you an idea of what the precedent has been, not just on South Flagler, but on North Flagler as well. But I think South Flagler is what is relevant here. Now, let's put a height comparison of our proposal versus the other luxury high-rises on South Flagler. Now, of course, Repallo's been there for many years. We are here at 193 feet of habitable. The rest of that to 204, of course, is the mechanical overruns, the chiller units, the AC units, the elevator core shaft overrun. But from Leclerc on, these are all approvals within the last decade. You will see that those are meaningfully higher. Why are we not asking to use those as a precedent? I guess you'd have to ask my client, because I kind of expected him to, but I'll, you know, tell you what I think the answer is. And that is, when the first thing that you do before we even apply to the city is we need to get a letter of approval from the FAA, which is the ultimate governor of how high your building can be. And our letter came back at around 200 feet. Now, what most developers do is you can then do a process with the FAA, because that's your base height in the first letter that they send to you. You can then do a mitigation package, where you agree to put four red blinking lights on the roof of your building and whatever other mitigation the FAA requires for flight safety, and then they will give you more height. And that is what you see demonstrated in all of these other buildings. You know, part of that might have been designed, but most of that is based on they did the FAA mitigation process. That process is sort of six to eight months. I don't think my client wanted to wait the six or eight months. They knew they weren't going to use those seven extra density units. They wanted to stay at the 39 units. They could fit their development program and the parking associated with it in the lower height, so they moved forward with the lower height. But I don't want this board to think that this is common. As you know, most of them go for the more height. And I imagine most future ones will as well. So that is the height, and I'm happy to come back to it. I know that is an issue. I will say, we had some really interesting community meetings, and I'll talk about the community outreach. We did very extensive community outreach, and the feedback was all over the map. Usually, it's sort of unified in these projects, but we had people that said, "I like it just the way it is. Please don't change anything." And then remarkably, on the other end, we had a number of people say, "Hey, I own a unit in a building nearby that is likely going to sell. I wish you would build a taller building because the taller building sells for more per square foot, and whatever that per-square-foot sales price is, is going to be the comp for what some developer someday will offer them." So it's kind of an interesting, even in the same room, people from the same building, we had "don't change anything," to "could you double the size of this and, you know, yield more money?" So interesting conversation, and we'll talk about that more when we discuss our community outreach. Waiver 3 is the number of access points. As you all know, you're permitted one access point on each road. We presently have two on each road. We're proposing two on each road so we can distribute that traffic around and not create traffic pinch points at any particular area. So that requires a waiver from you. These are our current access points. These are the access points. I think every other project has two access points. And every one of those peer group projects that I showed you all have a minimum of two access points. Some have more than two. So very commonly granted. Now, a companion waiver to that waiver is once we want more than one access point, then we violate a different part of the code, which is the separation requirement. You need a minimum of 125 feet between each access point. When you have a narrow property frontage facing a roadway and you want more than one access point, you cannot meet the 125 feet of separation requirement. That triggers another waiver. Again, these were granted on every other peer group project. Again, these were granted on every other peer group project, and it's the current condition as well, not only for us, but all of our neighbors. Waiver number five is another companion waiver that is triggered by the additional access point, and that is a landscape buffer interruption waiver. And that sounds very confusing, but let me try to put it in layman's terms. You're supposed to have a landscape buffer on your road frontage, and you cannot interrupt that for more than 20% of the frontage. Well, that works if you have only one access point. If you have more than one access point, it's really hard to meet that 20% because each one of those access points has to meet, you know, code width requirement for the vehicles. They have to have a wide enough apron onto the road. They have to have sight visibility angles where you can't have a tree or a shrub in the way. So by the time you meet all of those other code provisions for sight visibility and width of your drive aisle, you cannot meet this, which is why every other project that I'm aware of required this one. So waivers three, four, and five are all lumped together in the concept of having that additional access point. The last two waivers, I am going to ask land planner Lindsey Jean-Louis to come forward and better explain these to you than I'm going to explain them to you. Lindsey?
Good evening, board members. Lindsey Jean-Louis with Urban Design Studio on behalf of the applicant. Waivers six and seven are specifically in regard to pedestrian access to the site and the challenge of the existing grade at the right-of-way and accommodating the FEMA freeboard requirements for the arrival level, which is a 10-foot landing. So waiver six is specifically to the pedestrian outside stairway at the northwestern portion of our site. The code requirement is a 25-foot front setback consistent with the front setback requirement for the buildings. And our stairway encroaches 4.5 feet into the setback. Again, this is required in order to accommodate a more safe and gradual increase from the 5.5-foot grade at Washington Road to the 10-foot grade at the landing level for the arrival level where we see our pet grooming establishment here. And then similarly, waiver number seven isn't to the setback, but in regard to the height, the code requirement is you are permitted to have a maximum height of a four-foot wall within that front 25-foot setback. We are proposing a 5.8-foot wall on the Washington frontage and a 10.8-foot wall on the South Flagler Drive frontage. And again, these aren't walls, but these are pedestrian guardrails for pedestrian safety, and I'll highlight that in the following slides. As we can see in the highlighted star, this is the same location of our waiver six request. And again, this is to accommodate that safe and gradual increase for the pedestrian access into the site. The existing grade at Washington is 5.87 at the right-of-way, and the actual top of the guardrail is 11.75 when we consider the guardrail element being 3.5 feet on average above the actual stairway element. And then similarly, on South Flagler Drive, South Flagler Drive has an even lower existing grade, which is 2.45 feet. We're proposing, by this code, a 10-foot wall, where really it's the pedestrian guardrail element. And as you can see in this pedestrian plaza, that's a pedestrian path that slopes up to that arrival level. And again, in order to accommodate that safe grade, that's the subject of the waiver seven request. I'm going to pass out the next portion of the presentation. Back to Harvey. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lindsey. So, community benefits. We started meeting with our neighbors last September, October, so maybe seven months ago, before we completed a final design of the site plan, and wanted to hear what we could do to be a good neighbor and hopefully earn their support. And we heard a number of things, but one thing we kept hearing was, and I may need to go all the way back to the beginning of the presentation, but if you can remember at the beginning where I had in a red box where the site is, and you had to go five properties to the south to get to Southern Boulevard, or five properties to the north to Monroe Street, that means the only legal access to Flagler Drive for all of the neighborhoods to the west is to go up five projects or down five projects. Human nature dictates you really don't do that. You just cut through the parking lot of one of the condominiums that's blocking you from getting to Flagler. So we heard from both the neighbors behind us, gee, we'd like to have an access point over to Flagler, and we heard from our fellow condominium neighbors, we'd really like to not have people trespassing through our parking lot. So we proposed a public pathway through our project that is a nice paver material. It's even. There's no tripping hazards. It is well-lit. It's landscaped on both sides. It has security cameras. It has human security 24 hours a day. It is gated at both ends, so that our neighbors to the west now have an opportunity to legally get to Flagler Drive to walk or run, or walk their dog, or fish, or whatever they want to do, without having to illegally trespass or waste their time going up and down. Now, we've proposed to gate this at both ends, and if you'll recall, the Bristol did the same thing. They have a public access around the Bristol with a gate. We have not worked out with the neighbors yet, but of course, we will, in conjunction with the neighbors' needs, figure out when we're going to lock those, probably different times of the season. During the winter, it gets dark at 5:00. In the summer, it gets dark at 8:00. People may want to go after dark, so we're not trying to close it at dark. But certainly, when you get to 10:00 or 11:00 or midnight through the morning, nothing good happens during that period. That is when we would lock that up. And so that is one of the things we heard that the public wanted. Second thing that we heard, you see in the lower left-hand corner, and that is, people said, "I walk my dog down Flagler. Gee, wouldn't it be great to have a dog watering station?" So we said, "Sure, we'll do that." And then someone said, "Well, how about a human watering station? You know, I walk or jog, and I get thirsty. Want to fill up my water bottle? Okay, fine. We'll put that in the plaza as well." We heard that no one wanted any vehicles on Washington Road. They wanted everything internalized. No garbage dumpsters, no smells, no noise. Please internalize all of that. So we did. Asked for four-sided architecture, so no one's looking at back-of-house. We did that as well. We were asked to put a crosswalk across Flagler Drive that is a paver brick, which indicates to a driver, "You need to slow down. If the city will allow us, we'll even put the blinking lights in the pavement, so when you hit the button, the pavement lights up," again, indicating caution for people that need more time to get across. And in fact, we even went into one of the streets west of us, and they said, "Look, we have two problems here. We have a lot of cut-through traffic, people cutting between Olive and Washington, and we would love to have speed bumps here. We have no idea what the city process is to accomplish that. You guys seem to know city processes. Would you be willing to take the lead on applying for speed bumps?", which we are assisting them in doing. And should the city grant them, we will pay for those. We also heard from those same neighbors that they have a lot of non-residents parking in front of their houses, sometimes blocking their driveways. So they asked, "Will you assist us in obtaining permit parking only from the city?" Now, I did advise them that that's a double-edged sword. You know, you have a dinner party, and all your dinner guests get a parking ticket because they don't have a permit. So, you know, it's not the easiest thing to deal with, but they would like to at least explore it, and we are assisting them in exploring it. So it's a long way of saying, whatever our neighbors reasonably asked us to do, we have tried to incorporate it in the project, or even help them do it in their neighborhood. The other big request that we received, which was universal, is, "Looks like a beautiful project, but, you know, that's a long construction period. I do not want construction workers and construction vehicles coming through our neighborhood." So we, in conjunction with the neighbors, created a construction management plan, which we are happy to take as a condition of approval, that allows no worker on our site to park in the neighborhood. In fact, they can't even park on our site. They're all going to be shuttled in from somewhere else. So other than a project superintendent or foreman and the material delivery vehicles and, you know, bobcats and so forth, no one will be parking on our site or in their neighborhood. And we even created a reporting system, so if they see someone cheating the system, they let us know. And by the way, one of the two partners in this cult are, as you probably know, is the owner of Cast Construction Company, which will be the contractor, so they have the direct ability to eliminate anyone who violates those rules. We will have on a website and access through a telephone number to a superintendent or foreman what we're doing every week, so you know when there's going to be noise, when there's going to be any sort of, you know, vibration. We will put vibration monitors on our boundaries. We will have a, what I consider the most comprehensive construction management plan that I've seen in the city, all for the benefit of our neighbors. No deliveries of material can come via Washington or the western streets. They all have to come Southern Boulevard and up Flagler Drive and into the construction entrance, so we keep them as far away from the single-family homes behind us. So again, that was a request of the neighbors. I'm trying to illustrate to you how much we've tried to work with the neighbors to make this as smooth of a path as possible. Now, there are a number of environmental benefits, some of which I've stated and I won't restate, but we are looking to do a gold-level certification on the building. It will obviously be to FEMA standards, and it will be to Florida Building Code standards, ADA standards. Most of the buildings in this stretch, as you know, are quite old. They're similar vintage, so none of them meet today's Florida Building Code, Miami-Dade Wind Loads, FEMA. So this will be a safer, more resilient building. We've also over-engineered our drainage system. We're all familiar with the King Tide problem on South Flagler. We cannot solve that for all of Flagler, but we will certainly shed not one drop of water from our property, but we can also absorb additional water. And as these projects redevelop over time, which I feel strongly that they will, if all of them follow suit with what we're doing, we can, you know, begin to solve the problem on South Flagler. So I just referenced, you know, my belief that you'll see redevelopment here. Why do I think that? Well, in the post-Servside collapse world, the Florida Legislature enacted legislation that requires every condominium building in the state of Florida that is at least three stories and at least 30 years old to undergo a very thorough structural engineering analysis, to find rusted-out rebar and pitting and cracking and the things that they either were not aware of or aware of and refused to spend the money to fix at Servside. And so every one of the condominiums in Florida that meet that three-story, 30-year requirement, they have to do it. In fact, the overwhelming majority had to comply with it by 31 December, a couple of months ago. And whatever it recommends, they have to actually fund and pay for. You can't waive the reserve requirement, as many condominium associations were accustomed to doing. So what does that mean? It means condominium unit owners throughout Florida that are in older vintage buildings are receiving, in some cases, very large assessments. In some cases, assessments greater than what they paid for the unit. You couple that with, you know, nearly a tripling of insurance rates east of 95 for many condominium buildings, and it's a double whammy for a lot of these unit owners. So many of them are beginning to sell. You're reading about some of these in the paper. In our case, I don't know if that's what motivated them to sell. We have 39 unit owners. All 39 of them signed a contract agreeing to sell. And you've read in the paper that a few buildings to the south of us, that one of those has been sold to another high-rise luxury residential developer, and at least one more, probably more than one more, are in play. So I don't know if that occurs tomorrow or a decade from now, but one thing that I feel relatively certain stating to you is that many of those buildings are going to redevelop similar to this one. So I think you're going to see quite a bit of this. We just happen to be the first one coming along, and I would venture to guess the others are not going to take the minimum FAA letter height either. Design features, we've tried to do human-scale architecture on the ground level, you know, active uses on the street edge, four-sided architecture, as I said. All the parking's internalized, so we wipe out the cracked asphalt surface parking that our neighbors presently have a view of and the public has a view of. We've very intentionally placed the height in the skinniest tower we could in the center of the property to open up all of those view corridors, in some cases, giving neighbors more view shed than we have. I'll note that our neighbor to the south, Portofino South, they not only have great views of the water that we were trying to preserve, but in this T, they have a T-shaped building, they have great views of the downtown skyline as well to the northwest, and we tried to preserve those as well. Economic benefits to the city. Believe it or not, this 39 units presently generates only $46,000 of tax increment to the city. That's startling. We have very limited amount of waterfront property in the city of West Palm Beach. It's obviously the most valuable part of our city, and to have it generating this little for public benefit, I was shocked at how low it is. The annual revenue to the county of the current facility is $25,000. You can see what these numbers become at full buildout. Pretty remarkable for 39 units to generate $2.7 million a year of property taxes to the city of West Palm Beach. We're obviously not going to absorb any more police or fire calls than the 39 units that are there today. So all of that is found money to the city that can go for more police, more firefighters, fixing roads, fixing bridges, you know, improving parks, whatever our city commission wants to do with it. And the good news for all of us that live in the city is most of the vertical development, and therefore the revenue, has been in the downtown master plan area, which is, of course, in a CRA, which means the CRA gets a lot of money, but the city doesn't get a lot of money. So this is one of those rare, high-value projects that's outside the CRA boundary, meaning the money can be spent anywhere in the city. As I said, we had pretty extensive community outreach. These are five different neighborhood meetings that we held. We included some photographs. We had 120 to 130 residents cumulatively between all the meetings. We sent notices within 1,000 feet of our project. We knocked on doors. We called businesses. We reached out to neighborhood associations. So we really tried to cut a wide path. And you'll notice, we did all this back in October and November. And that is because what we didn't want to do is bring a fully baked site plan and check the box that we met with the neighbors a week before our public hearing. So we intentionally did this six months in advance, so we could hear about dog watering stations and pedestrian pathways and speed bumps, and we could actually incorporate those into our project. Well, that has resulted in quite a bit of neighborhood support, which I'm grateful for. I'd like to put in the record 72 letters of support of people in the neighborhood that could not be here this evening, but they wanted their voice heard. I'll give that to the clerk in a moment. Community outreach also included a website, so you could go look at our drawings. So it wasn't one of those where we put up the drawing on a board and then take it away, and when they have questions or want to look at more detail, all of a sudden, it's evaporated. It was on a website. People can look at that at any time. They can ask questions on the website. We have, not surprisingly, most of the businesses in the neighborhood support it. It's good for their business to have more investment in the neighborhood. We're honored to have the support of the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches, which was a unanimous endorsement. We have our SCAD letter from the school district. This is our school concurrency letter, which is required for all residential projects. We have our TPS, or Traffic Performance Standard, letter from the county, which is our traffic approval, which has also been reviewed by the city's traffic engineer and approved as well. So with that said, there are three sets of standards that you need to consider our proposal against. The first is the rezoning standard for that lateral rezoning from MF32 to RPD, and that is found in Section 94-32A of the city code. We comply with all of these. City staff agrees that we comply with all of these. I'm happy to come back to them, but I won't burn your time walking through them one at a time. Site plan standards are found in Section 94-35C of the code. Again, we believe we comply with all of these. Your staff agrees. And finally, the waiver standards on those seven waivers. The waiver standards are found in Section 94-273A2. Is that an A? Yep, A2 of your code. We believe we comply with all of these. Your staff does as well. We enjoy a staff recommendation of approval, and we accept all of the proposed conditions of approval that the staff has recommended for us. So with that, I will stop here. I have, as additional slides, more landscape, more architecture, more detail on the parking, should you have additional questions. So with that, Mr. Chair, I thank you for your time and consideration and stand ready for any questions.
Okay, any questions? Let me start on this then. Can you? Gene, any questions? No questions?
When I looked at the original document that we got, I was concerned when I looked at the elevations. at the elevations, that the building looked dated before it was even built. But I think that the 3D renderings that are provided here in terms of the presentation paint a totally different picture in terms of the elevations, and I don't think I have any issues with the way that the balconies are being done. Appreciate the softness of the curvatures introduced and makes it a little unique in terms of design.
Deborah, any questions of the applicant? Sam, any questions?
Yeah. Excuse me. The slide that you had showing the footprint of the same building complying with the ASRIT Now, that's still, yeah, it's one of the first ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, it's a long...
There's always this...
Yeah.
There you go, that's part of it. Okay, so I might understand that's, that's the same height, 200 feet?
No, that's 100 feet.
100 feet, okay, so it's a shorter building.
With 50-foot side setbacks, so you get two feet of height for every one foot of side setback, so to get to 100 feet, you'd have 50-foot setbacks. So that creates a 10-story, 100-foot building.
Okay, so it's much skinnier, okay. No, that's the only question. I was trying to figure out the difference in the actual mass of the building. Obviously, building it taller preserves more views all around than building it long and skinny, so...
Which has been the case on every one of the peer group buildings. Everyone's done the same analysis. They always come to the same conclusion that you get more open space, more green space, more view shed, more breathing room, so, you know, it's not coincidental that they all arrive at the same landing place.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
May we hear from staff?
And like to reserve time for rebuttal, Mr. Chair.
I thought you'd come back with a screwdriver.
Jeremy Swaby, Planning and Zoning Senior Planner. For the record, a digital copy of the letters of support and opposition was provided to the board members via email, and also hard copies were provided for the remaining letters, so they should be on the desk. Of the 67 letters that were received, 59 were letters of support and eight were in So just moving forward to the findings, as the presentation was very thorough. Staff finds that the request complies with rezoning standards found in Section 94-32A. Staff finds that the request complies with the design, site design qualitative standards found in Section 94-35C. And moving forward, staff finds that the request complies with the residential plan development district provisions found in Section 94-207C. Based on the findings, staff is therefore recommending approval with conditions provided Would you like me to read them out or explain anything? in the staff report of the planning board, case number 2002, for the rezoning with waivers.
Are these the only, the only two conditions?
And that pretty much concludes the presentation. No, I would skip through on request.
Thank you so much. Sam, let me start with you.
Oh, okay.
Any questions of staff?
Yes.
Could you spell out the exact conditions of the waivers?
So just let me know when it is that... We have three slides, so this is the second one.
I know it's in the report, but it's a long, very long report.
Somebody didn't read the report.
I know, I was gonna say. To see the conditions?
Yeah, what are, what are the conditions?
Not that I did, but not that I did.
Sure.
Of the approval or recommendation of approval?
It's true. We used to have...
Would you like me to move to the third slide or still? So this is the first part, if you want me to skip through, just let me know.
I read it. Now it's getting before me. I was always embarrassed. Because I break it up.
I was done, yeah, I was done reading that one. What I mean, I feel like it might be important for everyone to be able to read it all, or at least if you wanted to read it out loud, it might help for everybody that isn't able to read the screen. So in your, in your opinion, are these conditions similar to other sorts of conditions given for other RPDs that are similar in the city?
Some of them, yes, but, you know, as site, site quality and site, there are site differences, so they're not going to all be the same. There's just going to be some differences and some similarities.
But overall, it's the, like, similar conditions being required of the applicant?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I'm okay.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Edna, thanks so much. All right. Do we have any cards? I know we have a number from the public who wish to be heard. If there's anyone who wishes to speak who has not completed a card, thank you so much.
Look at you.
If you haven't completed a card and you wish to be heard, please come forward and give it to the clerk. We're going to have two lines formed here at each podium. I'm going to call two names for each one and call other names as we come forward. So please, on this podium, if we could hear from Liz Nunez and Isabella Aquino, and on this podium, Michael Zeft and Lisa Reeves. And please state your name.
Hi, Liz Nunez.
Go ahead, please.
So I'm Liz Nunez, good evening. As a Realtor in West Palm Beach, Florida, of course, near downtown, there is now a level of expected quality and luxury, and I believe the revitalization of Flagler House will meet that expectations. My office is over in South Dixie Highway. I work for the Kaiser Company, so that would be a big beneficial to our office. The developer has a proven highly regarded team, which gives confidence that this project will be done the right way, as we all want it to be. Another key fact, it would be that having a high-end project like this will help increase property values for the surrounding area, and I like the way that the Flagler House project has included the public, so they want to do that pathway for, from Washington Drive to Flagler, or Washington Road to Flagler Drive, I'm sorry, long day. And it's going to be landscaped, so they, the people that are walking through, they don't have to wander through the parking lots, which is, we can find dangerous to be walking through in the middle of night per se. And also, uh, let's see. And also, one of the greatest things about this part of the city is the natural beauty nearby, so a high-end condo would go perfectly fine in that area, being that a lot of construction is going on, and so they're getting rid of what's the old homes that are, that were built years ago, so now they're coming up with new development that would help basically the, I'm sorry, to keep up with the, the high, the high-end developments that are being built in that area, Flagler, Flagler Drive. Thank you, and I hope you support this project because it will benefit everyone, and of course, like they say, out with the old and in with the new.
Well, thank you. I didn't mean to cut you off. Are you done with your comment?
Yes.
Okay, thanks so much. All right. If we could hear from you, sir?
Hello, good evening. My name is Michael Zeft. I'm the president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches. Our, I'm here to request your, encourage your approval for this project. Our Government Affairs Committee and our Executive Board reviewed this project in detail, and it was, it was unanimously endorsed by both bodies. We believe that this will not only enhance the area's livability, but attract new investment in supporting the local businesses, and as I said, we encourage your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is Isabella Aquino here?
Yes.
Okay, you can come forward to this podium, that's fine. On this other podium, if we could have Jacob Scharf and Imogen Calvert? Please proceed.
So my name is Isabella Aquino, and I currently live in 3705...
Can you speak into the mic a little closer?
Yeah, so sorry, we're having trouble hearing you. Oh, okay. So my name is Isabella Aquino, and I currently live in 3705 South Flagler Drive, and I'm here to express support for the new construction in place of the old building. I, just in, in past year, I mean, I'm really, I became very aware and aware of the Servside laws, and I'm just really scared of the cost and maintaining the building, and the building has been built in the 60s, and I've lived there for almost 10 years, and there's constantly plumbing problem, there's, like they mentioned, flooding, and then also like a safety that's been really kind of my concern, because I, five years ago, I had like an accident in the building. I fell down the stairs and until now, and I broke my foot, and it was, it was just due to the stairs that have been like old and built out of code, obviously, the building is there from the 60s, so until now, I suffered like the side effect of it, like a constant pain, so I'm just really looking forward to close the chapter of my life, and I'm really kind of grateful to the development that it's coming forward with this proposal, that it's gonna really kind of, like I said, close the chapter of my life and let me move to another place. So that's about it. I'm just really grateful to that developer, and I'm looking forward for you to approve the project.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Is Lisa Reeves here? Okay, at this podium, if we could have Lisa Low, excuse me, yeah, Low rather, and Gregory Delia, if you come forward here, and then the side, sir, if you come forward. Okay, thank you.
Ready for me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name's Jacob Scharf. I own a house directly across the street on Lakeland Drive, stone throws, stone throw away. I understand that there are different opinions on this project, and I respect that, however, some of the people opposing don't live in our neighborhood. It will not be directly affected by these changes. I own a single-family, single-family home literally a stone's throw away from the development site on Lakeland Drive. As a Palm Beach County resident since birth and resident of this specific community since 2008, I recognize that growth and development in this area are inevitable. Change is coming, whether we embrace it or resist it. I prefer if it's coming that the development project be done by a top-tier company who has the capability of running a tight ship like these guys. In my experience, this development team has actively engaged with residents and local businesses, gathered feedback, and made meaningful adjustments to their plans. A good friend of mine is an architect and designer that builds large buildings identical to this. He had nothing but good things to tell me about this development company. Regarding concerns about the building height, the proposed design is six stories taller than its neighboring structures. From what I understand, the algorithm used to calculate potential structure height allows them to request an even taller building, which they have not. I'd hate for this project to be denied, only for another less qualified company to come along a few years from now requesting to build a larger, taller building. That possibility isn't a matter of it, that possibility isn't a matter of if, it would be a matter of when.
Sorry, there was, sorry, sorry, continue on, something went off on the phone, that can happen.
It's good, it's good.
My goodness, I am so sorry.
My only concern for this project is during the build, workers parking on our street during the 30-month construction process. I live directly across the street on Lakeland Drive. As previously mentioned to you tonight, the development company said they'll take this concern seriously and make accommodations, and also have repercussions should workers or contractors park on our street. I'm happy with that. When I first heard of this project, I attended a meeting looking for a reason to argue against the idea, but all of my concerns were addressed by the development company, which brings me here today. As a homeowner living literally a stone's throw away, I support this project and encourage the council to do the same. Lastly, all I ask is that the council consider assisting our specific street with the approval process for obtaining permit parking and adding speed bumps to our street. Ultimately, this will help our small residential street with slower-through traffic as well as secure homeowner parking only. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. I am so embarrassed.
Good evening, board members. My husband and I own a unit at Flagler...
I'm so sorry, could you state your name for the record?
My name is Lisa Low. My husband and I own a unit at the Flagler House right now, and I was blown away by the plans that is proposed in the sense that they've really taken a lot of care and consideration and not affecting the views of South Portofino. And I know that that was a huge concern, but my concern owning that property has become the drainage. Anytime there's a bad storm or we do have the king tide, the, over the last few years, it's definitely moved up into the parking lot, much farther towards the pool area. That is a major concern. Also, I love the fact that people would not have to walk through parking lots anymore, that they would have the walkway, so I think that that was definitely a valuable thing that they did to add that. And also, lastly, I feel that this building definitely gives way to the vision of the city being able to expand and to grow. My family are actually, I'm fourth-generation Floridian, second-generation Palm Beach County, growing up here, and I've just experienced all the growth and seen it, and my children have moved back to Palm Beach County to live here and enjoy the city. So I definitely think that this would be a huge asset to the vision that the city has to grow and to expand. So we ask that you would definitely support this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We hear from you, ma'am.
Yes, I'm Imogen Calvert. I just wanted to have, to suggest that the Planning Commission look hard at Washington Road. Where this piece of property is, is a, it's not a big piece of property, and there's certainly a slight curve, and it kind of gives you kind of a blind spot.
allows them to request an even taller building, which they have not. I'd hate for this project to be denied, only for another less qualified company to come along a few years from now requesting to build a larger, taller building. That possibility isn't a matter of it, that possibility isn't a matter of if, it would be a matter of when.
Sorry, there was, sorry, sorry, continue on, something went off on the phone, that can happen.
It's good, it's good.
Oh goodness, I am so sorry.
My only concern for this project is during the build. Workers parking on our street during the thirty-month construction process. I live directly across the street on Lakeland Drive. As previously mentioned to you tonight, the development company said they'll take this concern seriously and make accommodations, and also have repercussions should workers or contractors park on our street. I'm happy with that. When I first heard of this project, I attended a meeting looking for a reason to argue against the idea. But all of my concerns were addressed by the development company, which brings me here today. As a homeowner living literally a stone's throw away, I support this project and encourage the council to do the same. Lastly, all I ask is that the council consider assisting our specific street with the approval process for obtaining permit parking and adding speed bumps to our street. Ultimately, this will help our small residential street with slower through traffic, as well as secure homeowner parking only. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right.
Good evening, board members. My husband and I own a unit at Flagler-
I'm so sorry, could you state your name for the record?
My name is Lisa Low.
Okay, thank you.
My husband and I own a unit at the Flagler House right now. And I was blown away by the plans that is proposed in the sense that they've really taken a lot of care and consideration in not affecting the views of South Portofino. And I know that that was a huge concern, but my concern owning that property has become the drainage. Anytime there's a bad storm, or we do have the king tide, the, over the last few years, it's definitely moved up into the parking lot, much farther towards the pool area. That is a major concern. Also, I love the fact that people would not have to walk through parking lots anymore, that they would have the walkway. So I think that that was definitely a valuable thing that they did to add that. And also, lastly, I feel that this building definitely gives way to the vision of the city being able to expand and to grow. My family are actually, I'm fourth-generation Floridian, second-generation Palm Beach County, growing up here, and I've just experienced all the growth and seen it. And my children have moved back to Palm Beach County to live here and enjoy the city. So I definitely think that this would be a huge asset to the vision that the city has to grow and to expand. So we ask that you would definitely support this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We can hear from you, ma'am.
Yes, I'm Imogene Calvert. I just wanted to have, to suggest that the planning commission look hard at Washington Road. Where this piece of property is, is a, it's not a big piece of property. And there's certainly a slight curve. And it kind of gives you kind of a blind spot. And this is a complete neighborhood area. People walk, walk the dogs, scooters, the whole bit. And so I really want y'all to think about like a fire engine truck on Washington Road. Washington Road is just not that big. And so I hope that y'all will keep that in consideration with this project.
Thank you so much. So at this podium, if we could also have then Jean Moriarty and Mac Low at this podium, and sir?
My name is Gregory Delia. I reside at 3800 Washington Road. I've lived there since 2008 and currently am the president of the Board of Directors. I'm here not only to represent myself, but several of our members who could not be here tonight. While I appreciate everything that was presented, I, just before I get into what I've written, the project that was presented today is no different than the project that was presented to us. I don't remember the date that was up there, but sometime in the fall. They presented to South Flagler House, then they, to the yacht club, then to us the next night. This hasn't really changed. So the concept that some of these items for benefits, because they spoke to the residents of the neighborhood, they've been there since they presented it to us. I found that rather surprising. We're talking about a lovely residential historic neighborhood that is not part of the downtown business district, where taller buildings already exist. The proposed building is too tall for our neighbor, neighborhood. The developers refer to it as a hundred, now they refer to it tonight as 194 feet. We were told 198 feet. Our building is less than 140 feet, the majority of our building. I realize we are the tallest building there, but nothing that was presented tonight, when they showed you heights, showed you the difference between their building and our building at Portofino South, directly south of them, and it's considerable. It's over almost sixty feet. While I appreciate that the developers not increasing the density of the project, thirty-nine units for thirty-nine units, we're talking about 600 square-foot units versus new units, thirty-nine units, that are 2,700 square feet, up to 5,700 square feet, not including their penthouse. The developers requesting to change the zoning of the property to include a 996 square-foot commercial space. Currently, this space is strictly residential and should remain so. Their argument to me recently was that the dog grooming was an amenity for the building. They originally presented the dog grooming as a, they noticed a lot of dogs in our neighborhood and thought it would be nice to add this. When the business, when and if the business were to fail, what will they come back to request they use in that space? It's strictly residential right now and should remain that way. The next issue that I have is the issue on Washington Road. While I appreciate the picture that they showed you and the driveway that they showed you, it is a very, there is a curve and a bend in the road at that point. It is difficult to get around, and there will be a problem there. The building is also being placed on the property so that it sits very close to our building. They selected this property knowing full well what is currently allowed by law, and now they sit here asking for numerous waivers. Have conditions suddenly changed to require an admin, adamant amendment to the property?
Thank you, sir.
I thank you for the time.
You're welcome. On this podium, if we could please have Jose Esquanto and Joshua Sarkala. And who's coming forward here? Please. Your name?
I'm Jessica Swift. I'm the secretary for the Historic Prospect Park and Southland Park Neighborhood Association. We put a survey out to our constituents, and we had some interesting findings that I wanted to share with you. Firstly, that eighty-six percent of the residents that completed the survey have concerns about this project. Nearly ninety percent believe the building should not exceed twelve stories with reasonable ceiling heights. That means not luxurious ten, twelve to fourteen feet, but more like ten. Sixty percent believe this development will negatively impact property values. Ninety percent support implementing height restriction, so those setbacks, the narrow tall building, they don't want it. Eighty percent believe adding commercial space will have negative impact on the neighborhood. I think this is probably the second-largest issue. If we're looking at the height, I think that's the number-one issue for the neighbors. The second issue is this weird pet grooming thing that they're proposing, even if they say it's only for the constituents, I'm sorry, the residents that live in the building. I think it proposes a dangerous precedent. Mixed use could get very confused. I think it could lead, pave way to, I don't know, something like members-only associations coming into the area. I mean, what's to stop the next Soho House from being built next door? Those are the major concerns of the neighborhood, and I think many of them have written letters. I know that the developer, and I do want to say the Neighborhood Association is very, very in support, lockstep rather, with the commissioners and the mayor in terms of pro-thoughtful development. This is kind of above and beyond that for most of our neighbors. And I know that they said they had seventy-two letters in support. I wonder how many of those letters came from the people that they're buying out of the building? Moreover, the survey that we put out had more than 100 of our 400-plus doors come out in speak, you know, to speak against this. So I just wanted to put all of those numbers to you so that you know how the Neighborhood Association, our constituents, feel. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jose Escarret, and I'm here because I actually never, I, I, I'm very focused when it comes to all of these condominiums that are coming through here in West Palm Beach. Because I think that we've kind of fell behind. When I see Broward County, I see Dade, I see, I see an explosion in all these different areas. You know, you're looking at Tampa, you're looking on the West Coast. I mean, we're falling, I feel that we're falling behind. I've been in the industry for twenty-seven years. I own a mortgage company locally here. And I got to be honest with you, at this point, I haven't had a builder that I would back. And I just want you guys, everyone, to understand. There were three people that survived surfside, okay? And the two are my direct family members. So what I do is I make sure that I scrutinize everything that I see, especially when it comes to a builder. And I think it's extremely important that we understand that you have someone or a company that is doing incredible, incredible work, incredible homework, incredible, you know, I, I just can't explain, just listening to everything. The parking, the this, the that, I mean, it is absolutely thought out. And that's what we need, and that's what I'm supporting. So I hope that your group and everyone here will support it.
Thank you so much, sir, appreciate it.
My name is Sean Moriarty. I own a unit at 3705 South Flagler. More importantly, my wife and I live in the neighborhood in Prospect Park. We're excited, the benefits of this, the community enhancement, the landscaping, the pedestrian pathway, concealing the parking. The parking right now is out almost on Washington. We are excited how well this will fit into the neighborhood, especially with all of the multifamily around it, having this many less units, only at thirty-nine compared to 140 units at Portofino, sixty-one at Harbor Towers, forty-five at the Flagler Yacht Club. It fits in quite nicely. My bigger concern would be what is to happen later if the building falls into disrepair and those assessments are more than the building can handle? They do not have a huge reserve. What happens when it is at a desperate point, not at a point right now where they're looking to enhance it so much? I urge you to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Joshua Sarkala. When people pay millions of dollars for units, they'll probably be, which will probably be a second to third home, there's an expectation that there's going to be a, that these building and the grounds will be meticulously maintained. So that level of quality is not only important for those in the building, but also those in the, in the, in the area. As far as having a high-end project like this, it'll also increase the property values in the, in the surrounding areas. And this is the type of project that will, project that will benefit the entire city. I personally jog in that area, and I really appreciate the developer putting the pedestrian walkway as well as the, the water fountain idea. So I encourage you to approve the project.
Thank you so much. All right, at this podium, if we could have Alicia Marach and Rachel Gianni. Sir?
Hello, my name is Mac Low. My wife and I own a unit at Flagler House. I think everything has pretty much been covered that I was going to talk about. But I will tell you, there's some history with my family, myself. My, my daughter lived there for several years. We've all loved the place. We bought it from my goddaughter that lives there. Her father lived there, her grandmother lived there. We lived, we bought our unit from her. And I recall sitting out on the dock one night, and I said to her, does it bother you to see this large building? Which was Portofino South. And she goes, no, I moved here to look at the water and watch the yachts go by. It's nice to be in an old building and look at a nice newer building. So now, as time has it, it's turned around, and they could have the opportunity to see a nice new building that's done right, and not by some fly-by-night company. I think, I hope you guys can encourage the project because of the, there's a flooding problem, there's parking problems, but we've all, we've went over all of it. But there's just so many things that, there's a lot of working-class people in our building because we're not, there's middle-aged people that, we can't do what the building needs. It's going to be a problem down the line, so it's just time. We love the building, but it's time, it needs too much work. And we just like to encourage that you guys take good consideration.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Hello, good evening. My name is Alicia Mirage, and I just wrote something that I want to read off. In the wake of the surfside collapse, the view of aging condos like this one is changing dramatically. While the focus on ensuring structural integrity and avoiding safety issues makes sense, it has fundamentally changed the condo market. People are hesitant to purchase those like this one in this old building because of the thirty-year description and how the assessments could lead to higher costs today or down the road. We are fortunate to have an opportunity to move on from what would likely be a difficult set of circumstances ahead. And removing the old building will alleviate the safety concerns that exist and allow the community to be reassured with a new luxury building that can shape the community. This is a smart plan to move forward, and I encourage you to allow, to proceed for the good of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. On this podium, on my left, your right, can we have Benjamin Hartman and James Brown? Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Rachel Greeney, and I'm a nurse practitioner specializing in aesthetic medicine in West Palm. And I'm here to support the South Flagler Project. I believe that this high-rise will be a great addition to the area and will actually impact my business in several ways. An increase in clientele, the high-rise will obviously have high-income residents who value, you know, self-care and aesthetics. Many of them will be new to the area and will be looking for a trusted provider. It'd also be a great for networking and potential for referral. And also, with the raising, rising property values will benefit local businesses. Having a high-end development will enhance the surrounding area, attracting more upscale businesses, restaurants, and services. As property values rise, the neighborhood will become a hub for luxury living and increasing demand for aesthetic treatments that I can do, and further boosting my business visibility and clientele. I ask you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Hartman. I am in favor of the project. And I'll keep it very simple. I believe with the site that they have, what they've constructed has been very intelligently put together. I believe their right to build versus what they've proposed, even with the waivers, are very meaningful. I think it's only going to continue to add appeal to the area. I think it is going to continue to bring attraction, not just to South Flagler Drive, but in West Palm Beach in general. And as well, while we're still a community that functions on money raised through property tax, I think this will have a financial benefit as well, and that will continue throughout the corridor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this podium, if we could have Robert Durlin and Suzanne Palatino. And following this gentleman on this podium, if we could have Carrie Sable and Daniel and Anna Collet. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Jim Brown. I'm here in support of the project. I'm an attorney in town. I've lived next to the building for seventeen years. Two years ago, I moved just down the street from the building, and now we're building a new home a few blocks, a little bit further from the building. But that building's been a part of my life for the last twenty years. We have on a unit there. We've owned the unit for almost fifteen years. The last year of the ownership, our tenants have come and gone. I mean, it's been terrible. The tenants had the ceiling of the bathroom cave in. We had some problems with the AC from the unit upstairs. The lines are old, we had to have new lines pushed for the AC, it cost a fortune. And the rents, quite frankly, you can't, you can't drag rents in big enough to offset what it costs. We had to give a bunch, we had to give some rent abatements, and the woman that we had just moved out. Big-dollar roof repairs are needed. And this building is really the poster boy for the Senate Bill 4D milestone inspections and serves reporting problem. It's completely typical. For the past many years, I've attended the board meetings, and every time we have, we meet, we kick the can down the road under the old law, and we're deferring these assessments, and now they're mounting. The big problem is, from my perspective, insurance. My house just near, in close proximity to that project had a water intrusion problem. We were probably one of the lowest lots in West Palm Beach. This property isn't much higher than that, and that problem's only going to get worse. You can see the king tide's creeping further and further up the parking lot. And we sold that house, the developer bought our house and built a nice high-and-dry lot on that house. So I have a little PTSD from that. Understand, oh, the new building, yeah, less trips, big beautiful place, helps, and, and big open space set-asides. And I think it's a great amenity for the, for the community, and the waiver setbacks they've requested, from my perspective, are reasonable.
Thank you so much. Sir, we can hear from you, please.
Hi, my name is Robert Durkin. Nice to meet you all. I'm just coming here, I think everything's been said as well, but I will tell you that this project probably doesn't affect anyone as much as it does I because there's no one here that lives closer to the unit than I do. I'm the closest to the building, being on the south end of the Flagler Yacht Club, on the southeast corner. Everything about this building is beautiful. I mean, you've seen it. I mean, if you walk in the front of the buildings they have there today, including ours, versus what they're planning, it's an upgrade by far. As far as the height, people get into height, I get it. When they were building in Portofino South, I'm sure no one wanted, or people were saying, hey, this is too tall. I mean, we're probably sixty feet, and they're, I don't know what they were, but they're quite taller. It happens, but the way they're building it towards the water, to be twenty-five feet, instead of, you know, putting the building in front as they could do today and have it much more shaded and a bigger footprint there as far as a square, pushing it back and having the height go there, it helps everyone with the views of the water, which most people are looking for. When someone came up with a stat that it would not raise the prices around, I don't get that. I mean, if they build them for a hundred thousand, does that mean our prices go up? I think our prices will do quite well. That's what I'm looking for. The building's absolutely beautiful, the prices will go up. The parking on Flagler, from that building now, everyone parks on Flagler, because I live right there, is from that building, because there's not enough parking there. And they're all there. And this will pretty much eliminate that problem, which is great. The flooding is a problem. Having a building that's going to have zero flooding to add to the other buildings is great. We're obviously trying to fix ours as we speak. I've lived there for twenty-six years. Been on the board probably about sixty-five to seventy percent of the time I've lived there. And I think this will be a great addition to that area, and it's going to be absolutely beautiful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. I know this gentleman?
Hi, good evening. My name's Carrie Sable. I'm a longtime resident of West Palm Beach, a native of Palm Beach County, in fact. I've lived much of my life in West Palm. My children attend school in West Palm Beach in this same neighborhood. I live in the Soso neighborhood for many years. I'm a member of the Sina Neighborhood Association, and I also own two units in this Flagler building. So suffice to say, I'm an interested stakeholder in the outcome here, not only as an owner, but as a neighbor. I walk the neighborhood, I know the neighborhood well, we ride bikes with my children. I'd love to say I jog, but I'm just not that healthy, but I do walk through there.
You are under oath, Mr. Sable, as you mentioned.
You know, and tonight I came to express my support for this project for quite a number of reasons. Number one is the building itself is just not sustainable any longer. There's no chance that this building's lifespan is going to continue much longer. It's either going to crumble on itself, go into foreclosure, or be bought up and turned into a cheap apartment building. If you go and see the project, there's just not a lot to redeem out of it. Anybody who lives there, or who has lived there, which my son lives there, by the way, loves it, right? Like, it's just a beautiful place, but unfortunately, the building itself is no longer sustainable. We're going to suffer assessment after assessment, we already have, and it's just going to get worse and worse. We have a parking problem. We have one space per unit. People park in front of the neighbors, they park on Flagler. They're walking across the street, they're opening their doors while cars, it's a danger. This solves that problem. There's a, you know, a water issue, there's a maintenance issue. We have pipe breaks all the time. The building is just, needs to go, period. It's, as somebody said, it's time to out with the old and in with the new. It's, as somebody said, it's time to out with the old and in with the new. You know, I know traffic is probably, you know, as, as a resident of Palm, West Palm Beach, I see the traffic, and that's our biggest problem with growth, and I think everybody struggles with it. But I believe this building is going to reduce traffic, because right now it's a working-class building. Everybody goes to work during rush hour, comes home during rush hour. The owners of this building are not going to likely have children in school, they're not going to be clogging our streets, they're not going to be going to work, they're going to be shopping and eating while the rest of us are working. It's going to improve the tax base significantly, it's going to improve the business expenses significantly. And there's really, I came to defend this project because I assume there's going to be some NIMBYs next door, but I just don't know that I could do any better than Mr. Auer did. I just don't see how there's any way to reject this project based on the presentation. So we hope that the board agrees, and we hope that you will support the project, both for those of us who live there and for those of us who live in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this podium, after this gentleman speaks, if we can have Patricia Allen and Sharon Vines. And ma'am, if you would go next, please.
Hi, my name is Susan Palladino, and I too own a unit at 3705 South Flagler, the Flagler I have lived in the neighborhood for many, many years, raised my family there, my children are now raising their children. So a very comprehensive plan was presented on behalf of the developer, and since I'm a longtime West Palmer, I would like to commend them for more than accommodating the neighborhood with all of the additions as private walkways and speed bumps and dog-watering dishes and everything else that they're going to do. I think that's great. I would like to make a few comments to basically follow up on what the last gentleman said on behalf of the current residents of the building. Everybody knows it's an old Florida vintage three-story building. It was built in the early 60s, and we're all aware of the new condo law since the collapse in Broward. They are requiring structural, structural inspections with the repairs to be made by the end of this year. The building, as he said, is in very bad disrepair. Our HOA reserves are insufficient to meet the new condo standards, which means people are going to have to be writing checks for tons of thousands of dollars to handle this. A lot of people are retired, they live on social security, they can't afford to write these checks for these improvements, so it will, they'll be forced to sell at a loss, and that's going to be very unfortunate for our locals. The developer has made a very fair offer, and it will provide a financial solution to our residents, which we sincerely, sincerely need. So I hope that you all approve this project. Thanks.
Thank you. It's a long night for you guys. Hey, I'm Daniel Collette.
We get paid very well.
I'll make it quick. Actually, I live right next door to Jacob, who is up here at Jacob Scharf, and we're on the corner of Lakeland Drive and Washington Road. And I just want to say this about the developers, they have been doing everything they can for and meeting with us, talking things over, and are very congenial. Our only issue is going to be during the construction phase. I think we all agree that this is going to be a fine and wonderful project, and, and the fellow that spoke before is absolutely right. We've already been having cars parking over from this, this area. After talking with Harvey, I think he's very amenable to even having maybe perhaps the board or with him work with some conditions during construction that we can see in writing. The promises are wonderful. I think we simply want to see those promises codified, and if you could work that into your approval, and I'm assuming there will be an approval, that would be grateful for the, I think for the, most of the folks living in the residence, because there's probably, I would say, three roads that are affected. I'm thinking Walton, Coniston, and Winona, and of course Lakeland Drive is right there. So I think that's really the main thing we're looking for. We talk about permit parking during construction, whatever else there might be that can be done. Sometimes I've actually heard, I don't want to make it too public, but sometimes you could put up permit, permit parking signs, doesn't have to be enforced, but it's kind of restrictive. We welcome that. I think even that along the line, and we wouldn't worry about the people coming to dinner and that sort of stuff, so. Take that into consideration, take into consideration codifying some of the things that Harvey has talked about, and I think will be good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you wish to be here too?
My name is Patricia Allen. I live at Flagler Yacht Club. I've lived there for 35 years. When I bought, the limits were five stories. There was a guarantee of lots of green space, a promise that we would never become a concrete jungle like Fort Lauderdale. Well, that's changed markedly. If you saw how much, how much green space is there, there's like no green space. Open space of concrete is not green space. How they think they're not going to have a drainage problem, concrete doesn't drain. Green space drains. So we all have drainage problems, and I find it hard to believe with all that solid concrete, it's not going to make the drainage problem even worse for the neighbors. Another thing is, is that that neighborhood is totally residential. It's not like downtown where you're near huge buildings. This is a dangerous precedent. Not only is the height of the building a dangerous precedent, but having a commercial, some commercial dog grooming, are you kidding me? We're going to start doing, we're going to start changing from residential to commercial? It's absurd. But personally, my problem with this is that we have a beautiful garden and pool area at Flagler Yacht Club. The winter sun will be totally blocked. Our pool will not have sun, so all these sunning chairs that we have, no sun. That will block the winter sun. Now, in the summer, I'm not even there in the summer, but, you know, yeah, they'll get a lot of sun during the summer. But most of the people, I believe, at Flagler Yacht Club are seasonal residents like myself. So no sun for us because of the height of this building. So I think the height is a problem, I think that having a commercial dog grooming thing is not only absurd, but it's wrong. And the fact that the drainage is going to be ridiculous. I mean, we have a drainage problem now at Flagler Yacht Club with all that solid concrete all the place, it's going to be worse. Go back to demanding green space. We don't want a concrete jungle. We want to, we want quality of life. Most of this, all these people for it, it's greed. Basically, it's quality of life versus greed. They're all getting something out of it. So I implore you to put quality of life over greed. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this podium, if we could have Shannon Vines, Heather Hasenoff, I'm doing the best I can here. Sorry. Ma'am, if you go next, please.
My name is Sharon Vines, and I wanted to express my support for the Flagler redevelopment project for a couple of reasons. One, I'm in new business development, so I understand exactly what they're trying to do and what they're doing. I think it enhances the commu, the community, and I think they could have asked for more residents to be built, which they didn't. I love the fact they're enhancing it with a lot of landscaping around it, so that's going to improve the area, the way it looks. And more importantly, I think that they're going to control the workers on how they come and go to the site, and I think a lot of developers don't do that, and I think that's important, so they're being very sensitive to the community, and I think, I hope you support this new development that's going up, because I think it only enhances the companies that want to come in and work and live there and buy something to live in, and I think we're going to need that. I think there's more and more companies I'm working with that's looking for a place to live, and things are getting bought and sold very quickly, so I think we need it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I have three more cards here, Jean Pawalkin, Hyena Sugarman, and Laurel Hanson. Ma'am, if you could come forward, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Heather Hausworth, a West Palm Beach resident. I'll keep this brief, since you guys have been here for a while. I'm fully in support of this project. I think it's a very well-designed project by a very thoughtful developer who's taken the time to consider the neighborhood's character and future needs. Some have raised concerns about height, but I think change is a part of our city's natural evolution. When Portofino South was built, I'm sure people had the same hesitation, but now it's an accepted part of the landscape. Height's not a problem, it's progress. Taller buildings make smarter use of space, reduce urban sprawl, and bring economic benefits. Luxury residences like this attract investment, enhance property values, and support local businesses. The replacement of Flagler House will not only blend into the skyline, but also elevate the neighborhood. Let's embrace smart, responsible development and continue West Palm Beach's growth. I hope that the board agrees and will approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else? I've called several cards. If you have submitted a card and have not been called forward, please come forward now.
I had somebody ahead of me.
That's right. We have two podiums here, just get behind one, and whoever comes up next can proceed. Just tell us your name for the record.
We just want to make this longer, don't we? Right?
I'm so sorry.
We just want to make this night go longer, right? My name is Laurel Hanson. I live at 2881 South Flagler Drive. Please note my address. I said Flagler Drive, not Flagler Highway, which is exactly what it feels like most days, with all the speeding traffic, the congestion, the honking that goes on, and I do think this development will add to that. I oppose to the current proposal. Note that I say current proposal for 3705 Flagler for the following reasons. Although South Flagler Drive overlooks a beautiful body of water, it's still a neighborhood. We are a residential community, we have no desire to be trapped between the big high-rises going on down at Okeechobee, and this proposed high-rise, which is going to set a precedent, and it's going to include more high-rises on south end of Flagler, and we don't want that. The argument of what's already been improved for setbacks and waivers by this committee on all the new high-rises, that should not be considered. Our area is not that area. We're not down by West Palm Beach, we're not down where all the high-rise buildings are. We are in a neighborhood, and it's not comparable. The fact, and I, I'm sure I don't understand this exactly, but the fact that the developer keeps bringing up, and in our neighborhood meeting brought up, that they had FAA approval for height and air rights, that tells you all you need to know. The words FAA approval and air rights should not be used in any discussions regarding our neighborhood. If a federal governmental agency has to consider if it's safe for planes to fly near a building, it's obviously too high. We absolutely don't want commercial or mixed-use space in our neighborhood. We don't want the sprawl of Dixie Highway businesses on our residential streets. Please keep Dixie Highway commercial and keep Flagler Drive residential. I want to bring up our neighbors to the east, Palm Beach Island. I went to many of their Designing Our Palm Beach Week zoning meetings last year. I don't know if any of you went, but being a West Palm Beach resident, I'll never forget what one of the consultants said to the group. He told them they could demand and expect only the best for their town because developers were clamoring to be on the island, that they should only approve zoning that keeps the current character of the homes and the streets and not let a developer get away with trying to change what's beautiful about Palm Beach. He said, "This is Palm Beach Island, not West Palm Beach, where developers can get away with basically anything they want. That city's just happy to have development." Planning Board, we are not happy to have just any development. We can have the current building replaced with something that actually works for everyone. A lot of people are talking about, "Well, we can't afford to change things with the new building codes, and we have to have this building." We don't have to have this building, we can have a similar building that works for everyone. Off-topic, I think having a real estate agent, a jogger, someone who wants to sell their condo and move away, anyone who has a financial interest in this thing being built, their testimony shouldn't necessarily be given the same weight as a resident. I appreciate your time. Please don't rubber stamp this. This is a gorgeous building, and the developers have done an amazing job.
Your time's up.
It should be built somewhere, just not in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come forward.
Good evening. My name's Ayanna Sugarman, and I want to thank you for the time and careful consideration you give to projects that shape the look, feel, functionality, and beauty of our community. Your decisions have a lasting impact on West Palm Beach, and I appreciate the role in guiding responsible development. As you know, we've seen an influx of people moving here from out of state, drawn to our unique blend of small-town charm and city amenities without the congestion of concrete jungle feel of places like Miami or Fort Lauderdale. It's critical that we continue to prioritize thoughtful development and enhance our community rather than distracts, detracts from it. I fully support the board in approving developments that give back to our community. Projects that are architecturally beautiful add value to the area and contribute to public resources like fire departments, local parks, well-designed public spaces. I believe in supporting projects that prioritize walkability, bike lines, tree canopies, indigenous landscaping, and spaces that make our neighborhoods more inviting and livable. With this in mind, I have reviewed the PK Flagler House design and plans, and I wholeheartedly believe and support its development. I believe it will enhance the surrounding area, increasing property values, and contribute to the overall beauty of West Palm Beach. Thank you for your time and your commitment to presu, preserving the charm and character of West Palm Beach while allowing for smart, well-designed growth.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. I'm Lisa Reviss of Becker &amp; Polly Akoff, and I represent Portofino South condominium association. The applicant's request to rezone the property fails to comply with the eight criteria required to grant the rezoning, as there are no changed conditions which require the rezoning for the development of this site. It could be developed under its current zoning. The proposed amendment allows for a taller building, which shifts closer to the neighbors. This building will cast larger and longer shadows on the neighboring properties and impose adverse impacts on the surrounding developments. The applicant's request also fails to comply with the intent of the land development code. The code requires a minimum of 10 acres for a planned development. The applicant is seeking an 86% reduction of this requirement to 1.42 acres. This is not the intent of the code. The applicant is proposing an 85% reduction to the side setbacks, to 15 feet. The code requires residential buildings to be a minimum of 20 feet from the property line. The applicant is proposing a 25% reduction to 15 feet. This is not the intent of the code. The code allows for one access point on each public right-of-way. The applicant is proposing 100% increase to two access points per right-of-way. The code requires 125-foot separation between access points. The applicant is proposing a 38% decrease in the separation of the driveways on Flagler Drive and a 68% decrease in the distance from my client's property. A 31% decrease in the separation of the driveways on Washington Avenue and a 14% decrease in the distance from my client's property. The separation of access points is for safety reasons, and the proposed reductions will put neighbors' safety at risk. This is not the intent of the code. The code requires all outside stairways over three feet in height to meet the 20-foot setback requirement. The applicant is proposing a 50% reduction to 10 feet. This is not the intent of the code. The extensive waivers allow the applicant to overdevelop an undersized parcel with a taller building, smaller separation from their neighbors, and increased access points, causing a safety issue for the community. My client has reached out to the applicant in an effort to mitigate some of these issues, but the applicant was not interested in addressing my client's concerns. We respectfully request that you reduce the number of variances granted to reduce the building height, relocate the pedestrian easement to the north side of the property, and remove the commercial aspect of the project. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Thank you guys so much for listening. It's been nice listening to everybody else. My name is Jeanette Pavula, and I support this project for three main pillars. One, for just the community, the residential aspect of it. Two, community and growth. Three, real estate. And four, actually, after listening to all this and the extensive proposal, just the professionalism and integrity. So I am a realtor here, I do have a vested interest, but I'm also very protective. I was 20 years living in Chicago. I moved to not be in a big city. I've been in West Palm Beach for close to 10 years. I've seen the growth, change is inevitable. I am one of them that live very close by in the community, and community and network is everything. I walk my dog past that street every day. I am a regular at Cafe Sepori. and it's the neighborhood and the network and the community that I am very protective. So while I do have a vested interest in real estate, I have a vested interest in the community and preserving it, because change is going to happen. I think that the design and the layout, the setbacks, the way that it's going to add with preserving the charm, the way that most of the neighbors are really happy with the design and the layout, the dog-watering stations, I'm sorry, but Brutus will be there and stopping there. I really like the charm. I'm not downtown West Palm Beach. I don't want the concrete jungle. I love my neighbors. I love the friends. I love everybody, and I'm very protective over the neighborhood. But ultimately, I think it's going to happen, and I think that the way that they're doing it, they've listened to people who've been there for 40 years. I know I think I'm proud when I say I'm 10 years, but I've seen the growth, and I still really believe this is my community. I think the charm, the layout, everything, the fact that there's 39 units, they could have added on seven more for a luxury, and they didn't do it. You're not obstructing the view of the neighboring building. In Chicago, high-rises would go up left and right, and they'd be like, "Whatever. People would have to sell. You lose your view." So I really support that, too. You know, talking about community and the economy. You know, I live here off-season. I don't travel, and I'm friends with the staff that are at these restaurants during the slow season. And there's a lot of people relocating here within the last couple of years that I've acknowledged that are moving here full-time, which you haven't really seen. With all these new companies and commercials, the staff are coming, and they need places to live. But I think it's good, because it's also feeling more of a full-time type of lifestyle here, where during off-season, restaurants, these small businesses on Dixie Highway, are going to be supported. There's shopping. There's going to be more food. There's going to be more dining. And also, you know, the last part with real estate, with Surfside, you know, the stigma with people wanting to move here, that I here as a realtor all the time is, you know, the condo market tanked.
Thank you. I have to end it. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. All right. Ma'am?
Hi, good evening. My name is Mary Faulkner. I live at Portofino South. Yes, I'm on the north side of the building. My apartment has been in my family for 53 years. A lot of what I heard this evening was about how the developer wants to be such a fabulous neighbor, and a great deal of that talked about preserving the view for those of us on the north side of the building. If you look at Portofino in terms of stacks, we have a 12-stack, 11-stack, a 10-stack, a 9-stack, an 8-stack, and a 7-stack on the north side of the building. The 12-stack and the 7-stack both face east. That leaves the 11-stack, the 10-stack, the 9-stack, and a good chunk of the 8-stack, and our apartments are going to be turned into caves with an 18-story building next door. So you'll forgive me. I might have been born in the morning, but it wasn't yesterday morning, and the north side of the building, our views are going to be destroyed. Am I supposed to believe that the value of my apartment is going to go up? No, I don't. Not for one second. And I'm going to be left with an apartment and everyone, all of my friends on the north side of the building. We will have no view. We will have no sun in our apartments. In fact, when I'm standing in my living room with an 18-story building, I won't even see the sky, and that's true of everyone of us on the north side of the building. So it leaves me uncomfortable that these good neighbors, it makes me wonder what else was said tonight that was not completely true. For my president, I'm going to add this. He didn't get a chance to say this. "The current building proposal does not comply with the city's comprehensive plan, nor does it comply with the intent of the current codes. They are applying for seven waivers because they are trying to fit a square peg in a round hole. This is not a building that will add anything to the existing neighborhood. We are all in favor of development. However, we are in favor of responsible development, and in our opinion, and that of really all of our residents, this is not responsible development." We really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Before I read the cards that were given to me, is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening who has not spoken? And if not, let me read the cards I have. From Shannon Mariotti, they said, "There's no need to deny this request, as it will improve the neighborhood more than it could possibly bring harm. The height variance is less than was already been approved. South Flagler House of 373 feet. It will create residence more conducive to family living, which improves the neighborhood. The height will match the other buildings on the back of Flagler Drive. The new design and landscaping will be an improvement. A new building will be safer and more eco-friendly building." For Talia Rosnick says, "In support of the development, it would be great for the growth of the area and local economy. Please approve." Kathryn Wilkinson, "I am concerned about the extra traffic this will cause to the height, which is already too high according to zoning. It would also set a precedent for more development, such as this will have more traffic and congestion." Joey Colano, "I highly," all caps, underline, "support the height increase." Richard Hartman just says he's unsure whether he wishes to speak or not. And if you hear Mr. Hartman, if he wishes to speak, and if not... Anyone else wish to be heard? And if not, we're... Come forward, please. You'll need to complete a card afterwards. Come speak first, though.
I did turn the card in.
Okay, great. All right.
Thank you. My name is Kathleen Springhorn. I was not going to speak, but I would like to say a couple of things and ask a question. It's a lovely project, and it's been done beautifully, and I think that the people who have spoken about "please build it somewhere else," I understand how they feel. The thing about the sun, these... There's no question. This is definitely going to be blocking sun, and as a Flagler Yacht Club person, it's certainly going to block our sun. But we're not the only ones. The tall buildings on South Flagler Drive are killing sunset for Palm Beach. Now, that might be their problem, but it's something to think about. I mean, as a New Yorker, I can tell you all the places that are no longer in sun, that used to be along the Hudson, and they're just, they're blocked, or the East River. The other thing is, we are talking about the neighborhood, and we're talking about making sure that people can move here and live here, and the people working at the restaurants. And I'm not trying to be critical of anyone. I know what they mean, I think. I'm not sure. These units are not for anybody that's going to be working. That's just not the case. No one mentioned the price of these units. They did mention the square footage. So there's a displacement that should be recognized, and I think that it's just something that has to be considered. So, thank you very much.
Okay.
My question was, what is the price of these units? Because I think it's very relevant to many of the other things that have been said. And has anyone thought about the sun, not just our own sun, but in every direction? The boaters, everything. So, thank you again.
Thank you. All right. Do we have everyone for the public who wishes to be heard on this application? And if so, let's bring them back. Oh, I think, Mr. Joey, we promised you a chance for rebuttal, which I hope you'll keep brief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make this very short. One of the greatest concerns of the neighbors, and you heard it articulated by Daniel Colette, is a construction management agreement, which is a condition of approval, but that's an agreement between us and the town. I'd like to commit again on the record, as I already have, that we will work directly with our neighbors behind us before we turn that into the town.
City, please.
I would like that on the record. I'm not sure how you change the condition. The condition is already there.
Right.
And it's subject to the city's approval, but I want it to include a dialogue with the neighborhood.
Understood.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Just real quickly, there was an issue raised about drainage. Did I not understand from your presentation that 49% of the structure, is that, you said it was open space. Is that green space? Is that concrete? Is that...
You know, that's an interesting question, because every code has different words that denominate this differently. It is open space, according to the code. That does not mean that it's green grass. So we have multiple requirements, one of which is the landscaping, and I took you through a diagram that illustrates that we meet or exceed every one of the landscaping requirements in the code. So whatever the code requires, we are exceeding that in plant material, caliper of trees, plant-out heights of hedges and trees. So we feel very good that we exceed that. We exceed the open-space requirement, but that is not the same thing as permeable, you know, green grass.
But you have a drainage plan, too, though, right?
Drainage is a different issue, but it's a related issue. And as I think everyone on this board knows, but maybe not in the audience, the law requires not one drop of your stormwater runoff leave your property. So no one can allow that to occur. Our, you know, professional engineer wouldn't sign, seal, and certify our drainage plan if it didn't meet that requirement, and the city's engineering department would not approve us if we did not. But in addition to that, we've tried to create some additional capacity on our property to not only pick up our stormwater, but try to begin to alleviate what's going on in the neighborhood, which at the end of the day, the, you know, those are old pipes, probably a century old, and, you know, the city needs to upgrade those, but as these sites are redeveloped, we should all do our part to, you know, fix it at least within our property boundaries.
Thank you.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
All right. I think this is an important enough matter that I'd like just to go down the row, and just if anyone has any comments, you're not required to, but I gave you a chance, starting with you, Sam. General thoughts is impressive. As we bring them back to the board for discussion and ultimately a motion.
So we got to start our discussion, or just talk about comments, or...
Whatever you'd like to do. I just want to kind of just give every board member a chance to comment on this application.
So I think that with the, you know, with Surfside and with what's going on in the condo laws, this is something that's going to come up more and more, not only here, but also all over the state. And it should. I mean, you know, something that was envisioned as a lifestyle 70 years ago likely isn't the lifestyle of today, not only in the aesthetics of being on the waterfront here in Flagler Drive, but, you know, the safety of a building of this caliber. So I think that while it might seem shocking to neighbors who live nearby to see a building of this size, I think if you kind of take a step back and think about if this really is, I mean, I've worked with a lot of HOA boards and condo boards and whatnot over the years, and I can tell you from my experience that to get 39 homeowners out of 39 to agree on the day of the week is not something that's easy to do. So to have all the homeowners in agreement, it probably means that there is a significant, you know, issue with with the building as it is. So regardless of the opinion of the current plans, I think that, you know, it certainly feels like the right thing that the people living there would want to do, and I think the alternative could be where if you had a building that did fall into some sort of disrepair, and we didn't have the kind of conditions in West Palm Beach where somebody wanted to buy the property to redevelop it, it could be something that was an eyesore and certainly a safety hazard for other neighbors, and that could easily be the case at some point. Certainly, you know, in the past, it could have been an issue. So I did hear a lot about the developer's outreach to a lot of the neighbors, and it seems, at least from some of the comments, that they did try to address a lot of things with the neighbors, and I hope that they continue to follow through on the promises that they do, that they have promised, because I think that's important to have a good relationship with the neighbors. But I think this is one of what's going to be, you know, many all over the state in condos that are older and don't have the financial ability to bring up to modern standards, and you'll see things like this happen again.
Thank you. Deborah, do you want to say anything?
Yes, well, first of all, I'd like to commend the, those who put the presentation together, especially staff and the developer. I thought it was very thorough. I think it's a very aesthetically outstanding project, but I hear the concerns of those who shared them. Go back to Surfside, and I know many zoning regulations have been added, codes have been put into place to make sure that those types of tragedies don't happen again. I appreciate the community outreach from the developer to listen and to make some promises, which I hope will be carried through. The concerns seem to be addressed, and with what's going on, you know, development continues to happen. We're going to have the high-rises, and I could see through the presentation that every effort was made to make sure that safety requirements were at the top of the list. So.
Thank you. Peter?
I have to allow the developer for really coming up on some very innovative solutions to satisfy the needs of the community, particularly the pathway to ease traffic congestion, the dog-watering and the fountain, shuttling the construction workers, and also a very unique way to develop the design. The building footprint is obviously smaller. It is designed to increase landscaping and minimize shadows. There was a comment here earlier about RPD's requirements of 10 acres. We haven't had a 10-acre parcel of land in West Palm Beach in quite some time. Now, whether the city wants to then change the definition of minimum area down to three acres, that could perhaps be something in the future, but we've approved RPDs on much smaller sites than this one. They are entitled to build more than 39 units, and I have no reservations in terms of supporting the project.
Thank you. Patrick?
I would like to echo some of the comments that have been heard already. Just want to congratulate the project team. It's an excellent application, well-designed, well-planned. I think that this project certainly should and could be the standard bearer for future applications put before us, just in terms of the thoroughness and the engagement with the neighborhood well in advance. So I want to applaud you guys for that. Tacking on to some of Peter's comments about the waivers, I think, in my opinion, I feel tonight, we kind of heard one substantive waiver request compared to the other six that were somewhat superfluous when you're developing a project of this scale. And I would implore staff to look at maybe re-studying some of the code for, to make things less onerous when we hear these applications relative to, not to minimize it, but some of the minutia. It's equally important, but I think can certainly be handled at an administrative level. You know, especially with respect to the needs to bring this project up to code, up to the FEMA requirements, which are critical in, you know, avoiding the tremendous flooding problems that these folks have talked about tonight. Specifically, those final two waivers, I think our code needs to better reconcile things like wall heights and access when we're required to bring a project up to a new elevation for flood purposes, and, you know, we're just encumbered by these onerous restraints. So I think that's something I would just note for staff. Maybe there's something we could look at moving forward to make this a simpler process.
Thank you. Jean?
I think what was compelling for me, I always tend to look at what the applicant can build by right, and I think Harvey had mentioned 10 stories, 100 feet, more or less, and I think the renderings that the applicant has put forth is aesthetically more pleasing than what they could build in terms of massing. And I think if the applicants would have just built a 10-story building, you know, some of the residents would have maybe even more concerns about views being blocked, so on and so forth. So I'm in support of the current rendering, and I think they did a pretty good job in terms of the massing of the building. of the building.
Thank you. All right. Our new alternate, any comments?
Thank you. I'd like to commend the developer for the presentation and the thoughtfulness of the project, as well as our staff for going through this with a very fine-tooth comb. I found the request for the waivers to be very reasonable, to put some project like this into existence. I think the community benefits, particularly the access, far outweigh any perceived negatives. One of the things I know very well about is water and drainage, and I was very happy to hear that the project exceeds the code requirements for drainage. I know that's an issue that we're going to hear about for many years to come, but with the right foresight and planning, we can build more resilient buildings and have a more resilient environment, and I think this project meets that. I did find the pet grooming somewhat peculiar, but I don't believe the perfect should be the enemy of the good, and I'll support the project. And I do want to say that the conditions, was very happy to hear, especially on the construction workers, is very positive, working very closely with the neighborhood and the residents who would be impacted by that is a very positive thing, and I think, as my colleague said, should be the model, moving forward wherever possible. So I would perhaps maybe ask staff to be a little bit more meticulous with perhaps some of the pet grooming and being something that may happen in the future. But again, I think the overall benefits outweigh the, any perceived negatives, and I fully support the project.
Thank you so much. All right, at this juncture, given the comments before, I'm looking for a motion.
Okay. I move that the Planning Board recommend to the City Commission approval of Planning Board Case Number 2002, a request by Lindsay Jean-Louis of Urban Design Studio on behalf of PK Flagler House LLC for a zoning to change the zoning designation of property consistent approximately of 1.42 acres located at 3705 South Flagler Drive for multifamily high-density residential MF32 to residential plan development RPD. To allow for the construction of a 39-unit multifamily residential tower with 996 square feet of commercial, the Planning Board finds the approval for development in an area less than two acres is justified by the reduction meeting the following findings. A, particular circumstances justify such reductions. B, requirements for residential plan development zoning and the benefits to be derived from such a zoning can be derived in such lesser area. And C, permitting such lesser area for residential plan development zoning is in conformity with the comprehensive This motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes findings the fact that the application complies with the required standards of Sections 94-32A, 94-35C, and 94-207C of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations. In addition, this recommendation is made subject to conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated March 18, 2025. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistency with the comprehensive plan of City of West Palm Beach.
All right. We have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. We have, we have the other motion. We have the second motion on our earlier case. We want to call, this would just be a moment.
You give it to him, no?
Oh, do you want to do it?
Well, he did the other two.
Oh, do you mind? One second, guys. Let's do this motion for the earlier case. Okay.
I did enough tonight.
I make a motion. We'll go back for this one, right? Yeah.
I move that the Planning Board grant formal site plan review case number 2502, a request by Alfonso Hernando Architect on behalf of PB County and its Facilities Development and Operations Department, FDNO, for a new Palm Beach County office building approximately 57,000 square feet. This motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes finding a fact that the application complies with each of the applicable site design qualitative development standards found in Section 9435C of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations. In addition, the granting of this formal site plan review is subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated March 3, 2025. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
All right. We have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next on our agenda are co-revision cases, of which there are none, other business, unfinished business, new business. Real quick.
Real quickly, Rick Green, Development Services Director. We're continuing work on an update of our downtown master plan. We're in the early stages of that. Just letting everybody know, if you care to attend, Thursday at 9:30, we're having a session on the third floor of the library to talk about economics as it relates to downtown. That's at 9:30. We're going to have a series of experts come in, then we're going to have a question and answer afterwards. And in the afternoon, we're having a discussion at 1:30 on workforce housing. That'll go an hour and a half. Just a side note, RPD's are allowed to do 5% commercial, so the dog grooming that we talked about today would be permitted in any RPD. We'll look at changing to 10 acres. We've known about that for some time.
Right.
The other thing is that we have a provision that any development in excess of 2 million square feet or a single-family development or historic district has to do a construction management plan. So you've seen that in some of your recent approvals. It talks about how you get your access to the site, what roads you can use, where you're going to park your employees, and then how you're going to stage your equipment and all of that. So that's a requirement. We're doing that now. We had a meeting with engineering two weeks ago, because what we want to do is formalize that in the form of an engineering permit that will have to be secured prior to the issuance of a building permit. So, we're getting a lot of concern with all the development we're having, and people
Right.
can't accept growth, so we're getting a lot of complaints in the office.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's going to be a standard. You're going to see that in all future developments as we have been doing, so.
All right. Thanks. All right. Thanks, everyone. We stand adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Green.